Testing.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is now 6:30, and I will call this regular meeting of the Burnsville City Council to order. It is our tradition to stand for a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, and we invite you to join us. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have announcements for our upcoming meeting, and then we have a presentation and two proclamations. Council meetings are scheduled for Tuesday, May 6th, and Tuesday, May 20th at 6:30 p.m. And we have a work session meeting scheduled for Tuesday, May 13th at 6:30 p.m. And a special work session on Wednesday, April 23rd at 6:30 p.m., and this is the city manager's performance evaluation. All meetings are held here in the council chambers except for the special work session meeting. And then I am going to be on that side at the podium for the presentation from our Lions Club. Members of the council and citizens of Burnsville and guests. If you don't know, you look around there, you see a lot of purple. We're in purple because we're honoring our Lions Club. And it is my great privilege this evening to invite the incoming president of the Lions Club, Mr. Steve Knutson, Lion Steve Knutson, for a presentation. Lion Knutson.
Good evening. Good evening, and thank you. My name is Steve Knutson, and I'm a member of the Burnsville Lions Club, along with the rest of them that are here in the purple shirts. And on behalf of the Burnsville Lions, we want to thank the council for the opportunity to continue growing our partnership with the city, Burnsville Park, police, fire, and other departments, plus work on projects that are important to our club as residents, business people, and the community as a whole. Our vision, we are dedicated to enriching the community through service activities, is our model. And I want to take a minute to also mention some of the other things we do in the community and beyond. And these include, but are not necessarily limited, to food shelf support, park and county road cleanups, eyeglasses for students, eyeglass collections, school supplies, dictionaries for third graders, various senior events, globally, feeding by starving children, planting trees in city parks, Ames Performing Arts Center ushering, the most recent dental clinic at Prince of Peace Lutheran Church, the City of Savage, and the many requests for funds. To learn more about the Lions, feel free to see one of our purple shirt folks or look for some of our brochures around town at collection points for glasses. We would welcome telling you more about the Lions. In closing, our club is committed to growing in the community as the service needs require and continue to grow that partnership with the city of Burnsville. And with that, we'd like to present a check to the city of Burnsville for $70,000 to continue our growth in Clifffin Park for water playground equipment.
Members of the council and city manager and our staff, if you remember, this is the second phase of the Lions Park, and this is the water park portion. You were a bit humble, Lion Knutson, for what you've said because the Lions Club also last year put in $50,000 for the first part of the Lions Playground. $50,000 to the hospital for the, for the children's, the pediatric unit.
That's true.
$20,000 to the garage. I know all these things because I'm a lion and a proud lion as well. So, thank you. On behalf of the city council, our staff, and the community of Burnsville, we thank you for your continuous partnership with us and continuing to making our community the best that it can be. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have to have photo op. I know we have. This is very important for our community, so. And staff, and...
A backup for Marty in case his camera doesn't work.
So, who else? Yes, because you're important.
Make sure you can see me, because if you can't see me, I can't see you. And let's look this way on three. One, two, three. I'm gonna take one more. On three, one, two, three. And Heather, can you take just a half step to your left? There you go. On three, one, two, three.
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks. I'm not done. We have two proclamations this evening. The first one is for Earth Day and Arbor Day, April 26th, 2014. Whereas, Burnsville has taken great pride in the quality of our natural environment, including the beautiful shade trees and native plants that enrich our lives in many ways. And whereas, we need to practice safe environmental approaches in managing our forests, lakes, wetlands, and open spaces. And whereas, Burnsville promotes development that maintains and enhances economic opportunity and community well-being while protecting and restoring the natural environment. And whereas, the purpose of the Earth Day Arbor Day celebration is to emphasize the importance of preserving our natural environment through sustainable activities such as recycling, waste reduction, and resource conservation. And whereas, Burnsville recognizes the need to protect and preserve the beauty of our community by promoting good stewardship of our natural environment for future generations. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Elizabeth Touts, Mayor of the City of Burnsville, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim April 26th, 2014, as Earth Day and Arbor Day in the city of Burnsville. In celebration of Earth Day and Arbor Day, a community tree sale and native plant sale will be held on Saturday, April 26th, 2014, from 7:30 a.m. to 10:30 a.m. Information and sustainability, composting, and water quality will be available at the tree sale. We encourage the entire community to participate, proclaim this 22nd day of April, 2014. The next proclamation is for Tourism Awareness Week. Whereas, travel is among the largest private sector employer in the United States, supporting 14.4 million jobs in 2011, including 7.1 million directly in the travel industry and 6.9 million in other industries. Whereas, tourism in Minnesota is an $11.9 billion industry, employing more than 238,000 people with state and local tax revenue of $769 million. Whereas, tourism in Burnsville continues to play a vital role in the economic well-being of our community, and tourism in Burnsville provides full-time and part-time employment for citizens of our city. And whereas, the Burnsville Convention and Visitors Bureau has dedicated itself for 27 years to stimulating visitor traffic to the Burnsville area, creating income for both the hospitality industry and general business community. And whereas, the city of Burnsville takes great pride in the hospitality it shows its guests, now therefore, I, Elizabeth Touts, Mayor of the City of Burnsville, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim the week of May 4th through the 10th to be Tourism Awareness Week in the city of Burnsville, and urge citizens to honor and celebrate this special event proclaimed this 22nd day of April, 2014. And I'd like to ask our executive director for the Burnsville Convention and Visitors Bureau to please come forward and receive the proclamation, Ms. Amy Burl. Ms. Burl, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Here's your proclamation.
On three, one, two, three. And one more, on three, one, two, three.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is citizens' comments. This is the opportunity for anyone in the audience to address the council on an item that is not on the printed agenda and not in application form that's coming before us at a future date. Is there anyone who wishes to address the council? On an item that is not on the printed agenda, please come forward and give us your name and address for the record.
I'm actually here on behalf of my father. Can't make it because he's working. The address is 2612 Williams Drive. My name's Don Schultz.
Good evening, Mr. Schultz.
We have, we got a letter stating that they want us to replace our driveway. Our driveway is gravelled, and it was like that when we moved in. And I'm assuming it was probably like that when the house was built.
Okay. Let me just see. I'm going to direct you, Mr. Schultz, to speak with our community development director, Ms. Faulkner, and then she can work with you and try to understand better what's going on. Is that okay? And this is Mrs. Faulkner.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Very good. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council on an item that is not on the printed agenda and not in application form coming before us at a future date? Anyone else? Seeing no one, we will move on. The next item is for emergency items only, and this is additions to the final agenda. Ms. Johnston, are there any emergency items to come before the body?
None from staff members.
Members of the council? Okay. We will move on. The next item is the consent agenda. This is a grouping of items that's considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. However, an item can be removed from the consent agenda for a separate discussion and vote. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes an item on the consent agenda to be removed for a separate discussion and vote? Ms. Johnston?
None from staff members.
Members of the council? Council members, I would like to pull item I, and I would like that to be a separate discussion, and because I would like it to be continued. And this is not the right time to discuss a lot of this. And item I has to do with our policy for memorials in the park. Councilmember Sherry.
Madam Mayor, I, do you need a second on that to...
Well, not just right now, but just, I'm pulling it, and then when we have the, when I ask for continuing it, then I do need a motion.
Just to say that I was going to ask for some clarification, and I think maybe it would be better to discuss that at a later date.
Yeah. Okay. So, may I have a motion for the balance, please?
Second.
Councilmember Keely makes the motion, second by councilmember Sherry. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye oppose, say nay. And the motion carries. Members of the council, this is the policy that, it's about placing memorials in parks, and I believe that it doesn't address some of the things that we had talked about. And I believe that we need to make sure that those issues are addressed before we adopt this policy, so we don't have holes and misinterpretations of a policy as we move forward. So, with your permission, I'd like to continue this item and work through some of those issues.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Councilmember Keely seconds the motion. Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye oppose, say nay. And the motion carries. Thank you. We now move on to the first item on the agenda, and that's item number five, and this is an application for Independent School District 191 for a conditional use permit amendment to replace the existing stadium scoreboard and a variance to the signage requirement at Burnsville High School located at 600 West Highway 13. We're asked to consider the findings of fact, the conditional use permit, and the variance. Mr. Slenia, our planner, is presenting this evening. Mr. Slenia.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. The planning commission saw this item at their meeting last week on April 14th. The planning commission reviewed it, held the public hearing, and made a recommendation with a couple changes to what staff had recommended. Initially, staff was supportive of the application, recommended approval. The planning commission was split three to two with two changes to the conditions outlined by staff. I'll get to those in just one second. The application, again, is to replace and enlarge the existing scoreboards at Burnsville High School. Here you'll see a location of the scoreboard within the stadium. One and two, this being the practice field for the football team. The existing, the proposed, the existing practice field, and the proposed. At the meeting on the 14th, the planning commission discussed the use of this video display and the number of times that was reasonable to be used over the course of the year. Staff was recommending a specific number of events. The planning commission felt that was not necessarily, not necessary, and recommended that any time an event be held in the stadium, this, the scoreboard and the video monitor be available. But they did also recommend adjusting the times so that it can, again, it can only be used when there is an event in the stadium. It can only be used 45 minutes prior to, and must be shut down 30 minutes after said event. By default, the planning commission intended that to really limit the number of events so that this wasn't intended for advertising without being connected to some type of school function that was in the stadium. There was also discussion about the size of the proposed scoreboard. The vote, the recommending vote in favor was three, in favor, two against. Commissioners Bradrick and Thomas were concerned with the total size of the scoreboard, and thus their dissenting vote. Following the planning commission meeting, staff had a number of conversations with the school district. They are agreeable, as is staff, and now it would go to the city council, to limit the total height of the scoreboard to 40 feet. The planning commission was originally at 45. Based on our conversations, the total height would be down to 40. There are no other changes with the application. We do have representatives from the school board here should the council have any questions. And, Madam Mayor, council, I'll stand for any questions you have.
Okay. Councilmember Sherry.
Mr. Slenia, was our Public Safety Department engaged in the question of whether that video display would be a distraction to drivers on Highway 13?
They were aware of the application, and they raised no concerns with it.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Slenia, if staff came in at 45, and the planning commission thought it was too large, and so the compromise was to go to 40?
Correct. That is the compromise in front of you this evening, correct?
Councilmember Coughlin.
Is our school board member here?
Someone from the school.
We have the...
Yeah.
Okay. And are you satisfied?
Councilmember Coughlin, if I can ask him to come, and then I can have, recognize you, please come forward. Give us your name and address for the record, and then Councilmember Coughlin has questions.
Thank you. My name's Jeff Marshall. I'm the Athletic and Activity Director at Burnsville High School, located again at said address previously of the high school. I will apologize for my dress. I'm coming directly from the lacrosse game that's going on right now, and I was hoping to go home and change beforehand, so my apologies for that to all of you, but...
No problem, Mr. Marshall. Councilmember Coughlin.
Marshall, are you satisfied with the result, and will it meet, reasonably meet the needs of the school under these restrictions?
We are satisfied. You know, some of the restrictions that had been put into place before we went to the planning commission, we had some concerns about, and the commission did address those specifically with the number of events that we could, that we could have that for, because we were concerned about some limitations. The scoreboard is intended not just for athletic event purposes, but for events such as graduation, marching band, the dance team, and those kinds of things. And so, in addition, the stadium is used quite a bit by a number of outside groups as well, and so we did not want to have, we're hoping not to necessarily have those limitations, especially as outside groups came in.
But what I'm trying to ask is, now, is it, does it meet your needs?
It will meet our needs. Yep. We're gonna have to do some adjusting with, with the layout, but the 40 feet will meet our needs.
Okay. And you're satisfied that, and I think it makes sense that you would want to make sure that the scoreboard is available for other events.
Exactly. You had mentioned the tourism piece earlier.
Yes. Absolutely.
That, the potential for the field right now brings a lot of outside users in, and this is gonna be even more of a draw, I think, for a lot of groups to come in.
Very well. Okay. Great. Thank you. Councilmember Keely, did you want to, okay. Councilmembers, press your button, so I know who's in queue. The councilmember Keely.
I just wanted to comment, I think we need to take a look at this ordinance, governing this. I don't believe that we, I think we micromanaged this process. I heard some of the planning commissioners' members, members, mention that as well, that the scoreboard at the high school may not necessarily fit our current ordinance structure, and maybe we need to take a look at that going forward and not put them through what we put them through. I think it was unfair. It was significant micromanaging that I don't think we needed to do, but I'm glad that they were able to work with the staff and find a win-win. But I do believe that that scoreboard does not really need to be governed the way it is currently. And so after this process, I'd like for us to take a look at that, because maybe 10 years from now, they'll wanna jumbotron it even bigger and...
Well, I think it, it would be for all scoreboards, not just the one at, at the school district property, but in our, our property as well, all of our parks, so.
Do we have big scoreboards like that at our...
No, we don't, but we, we need a sponsor.
See, they're doing it right. They're putting sponsorship panels up, so.
Yes.
Anyway, I'm in support of it. Thank you.
All right. Very good. Are there any other questions? Then if there are no other questions or concerns, a motion is in order, please.
Happy to second.
Okay. Councilmember Sherry makes the motion, second by councilmember Keely. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye oppose, say nay. And the motion carries. Thank you.
I note to Mr. Marshall, he now knows to have, he has to come early if he'd like a front row seat at a council meeting, because we are popular here, and as you can see.
Okay. The next item is item number six. Item six is a public hearing. This is the ordinance ratifying the liquor investigation and license fee establishment by ordinance number 1307. Our city clerk, Michelle Collins, is presenting this evening. Ms. Collins.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Council. In 2013, staff reviewed survey information on all liquor license fees for comparable metro cities and concluded that a 5% increase would keep fees comparable or on average with other suburban communities. And that survey information was part of your background material. This ordinance for your review tonight specifically addresses on-sale wine, 3.2% on-sale, 3.2% off-sale liquor license fees. A 30-day notice was mailed to all of the affected license holders notifying them of this public hearing for the fee increase as required by Minnesota statute. Staff recommends adoption of the ordinance as presented to ratify the proposed 2014 liquor license fees. Okay. This is a public hearing. I stand for any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Collins? No questions. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak to this item? Anyone who wishes to speak to this item? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Members of the council, your pleasure.
Move to approve.
Second.
Councilmember Keely makes the motion, second by councilmember Wynn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye oppose, say nay. And the motion carries. Thank you. We're at item number seven. Item number seven is also a public hearing. This is to approve an off-sale liquor license for Minnesota Fine Wines and Spirits, LLC, doing business as Total Wine &amp; More at 820 County Road, 42 West. Ms. Collins, our city clerk, is presenting. Ms. Collins.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Council. Yes, we are looking at an off-sale liquor license for Minnesota Fine Wine and Spirits. The investigation has been conducted on the operating manager and the principals involved, and nothing was found to deny the license. License issuance will be contingent upon land use approval, certificate of occupancy, fees being paid, and approval from Minnesota Alcohol and Gambling Enforcement. This is a public hearing. I stand for any questions.
Questions for Ms. Collins? Seeing no questions, I will now open the public hearing. And I know that there are many who wish to speak. And as our, as is our process here in the city of Burnsville, we're allocating five minutes for each speaker, and I would ask that you please don't repeat yourselves, because if we know that you're for or against, and the reasons for why, it doesn't make any sense to keep repeating the same statement over and over again. So, and I, and you have, has everyone signed in who wishes to speak? If you haven't, please sign the sheet, and we'll be able to retrieve that, and I will have it. So, I have, Mr. Don, and you're going to all have to forgive me for pronouncing your name, because some of the writing here I did not, it's not legible for me. So, Mr. Don Schultz? Mr. Schultz? Ah, oh, that's right, the driveway, that's right. Okay. Next one is Mr. Erickson, Chuck Erickson. Would you please come to the podium and give us your name and address for the record? And so when I call your name, please come to the podium and give us your name and address for the record. Mr. Erickson.
My name is Chuck Erickson, 2804 Brookview Drive. When my family and I moved to Burnsville in 1978, there were, it was a small community, and there were several small hardware stores, I think a couple of liquor stores, and so on. As we grew, things changed. Those hardware stores are no longer in existence. We have Home Depot. So, I am speaking against the approval of the license for the reason that I do believe that having another liquor store in the area around Target would mean probably 85,000 square retail space devoted to the sale of alcoholic beverages. I think that is a high concentration for the area. We have close to... We have close to that area. There, of course, is the Costco store that sells spirits. We have in the, in the immediate vicinity MGM and Cub. Byerly's is not far away, a little farther to the west is the Byerly's store, and then the Blue Max. And then farther to the east is the small store, liquor store on one hundred thirty-eighth, one hundred and thirty-sixth street, just off of County Road Five. I am concerned about this, and I'm concerned about the company. I've done quite a bit of research over the internet, and I find that Total Wine has had in eleven states violations totaling more than one million dollars. I think that is a little high, and I wondered in their application if this had been disclosed. Furthermore, most of the profits of theirs would not be in Burnsville, it would be sent to Maryland. And I think that the idea of all of these liquor stores in one area is more than Burnsville really wants in the direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Erickson. Next is Mr. Paul Hilla. Mr. Paul Hilla wants to speak? Okay. Mr. Jeff Seigla.
No comment?
Okay. Marian?
Doshner?
Doshner?
Downer.
Downer?
Downer.
Okay. Ms. Downer? Pardon me?
She'll answer questions if someone here...
Okay, thank you. Mr. Richard McKinney.
I relinquish my time to another party.
Okay, Ms. Kathy Cleveland. Okay. Mr. Bill Corby.
I have to apologize, I didn't know I was signing up to come up and say something. I thought it was just a signing sheet, but as long as I'm here, good evening, Madam Mayor, City Councilmembers, City Staff. I just have a prepared statement from our Board of Directors I wanted to share with all of you tonight. The mission of the Burnsville Chamber of Commerce is to unite and support local businesses while increasing economic opportunities and fostering a healthy business climate. There is nothing more important to us than the success of our private sector businesses. It's important that Burnsville offers a wide range of business and retail opportunities for its residents and those of the region within the laws and ordinances that govern the city. It is our hope that a decision on Total Wine is based on existing ordinances and made in the spirit of free competition. We support our local business owners, as well as growth and development of businesses within Burnsville, for the health of Burnsville as a community. When a business choosing to reside in Burnsville has satisfied all requirements of applicable zoning and ordinances set forth by the city of Burnsville, we expect that business would have the opportunity to join the community of Burnsville businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Mary Hilla. Ms. Hilla?
I just refer to the...
Okay. I will continue to just call and see if you wanted to speak, if you signed in, because it says if you wanted to address the city council sign, so, but if you want to speak, please.
Is it okay if I call, if I sign one back there?
Sure.
Honorable Mayor, respected members of the council, my name is Mary Hilla, and I reside at seven oh eight Chicago Drive in Burnsville. I was raised in Burnsville, I spent my entire life here. I've traveled around, I have been in other cities and states, but Burnsville will always be my home. And I'm gonna say something to loosen the ice a little bit. I was a little nervous about speaking tonight, because when I was in high school, I got the name The Talking Podium, because I couldn't see where the top of the podium, and I can see you don't have a stepstool for me again today. So bear with me. My father came to Burnsville over sixty years ago, when it was simply a township, it was not even a city. He came here to raise a family and build a business. That was the business of building homes. When he was asked, who would want to move south of the river to farmland, his response was, if you build the houses, the businesses will follow. Over his lifetime, he has built over two thousand homes in this area. He donated significant amounts of land to the city for parks, including Vista View Park, which is still in use today. He personally started many businesses in this area, including Burnsville Lumber Company, Hola Apartments, Jet Liquor, now known as Crosstown Liquor, and Hilla Construction. He assisted the city in winning the Black Dog Power Plant lawsuit against Bloomington, and he's donated many needed funds to the city for contributed growth and development through the years. My father was here at the beginning of the city and was instrumental in its growth. He raised seven children in this town, in a community where contributing to the community was not a choice, but a way of life, an expectation. We were raised to believe in community, and I believe strongly that allowing the granting of this license would be damaging to the city and the community. We have always been here for this city, pitched in in many, many ways. When there was damaging winds in nineteen ninety-eight, the city maintenance called us to help unblock streets for, that were, to clear the streets for emergency vehicles to get through. We have been here, and we will continue to be here. The seven children are all still in the city, we all have businesses in this city. Hilla Home Appraisals, PE Construction, Benham Building Corporation, Crosstown Liquor. We have been here for years, and we continue to be here for years. My family has been part of this city in the beginning, from the beginning, has contributed to its growth and experience as you have seen it today. We would like to see Burnsville stay a community, and we believe strongly by allowing this license to be granted, that it would be damaging to the city. Please deny this license. You have it within your power legally to do so, do what's best for its city and residents.
Thank you, Ms. Hilla. Mr. Scott Hilla, do you have anything new to add to what your sister had to say?
Yes. My name is Scott Hilla, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. I'm the owner of Crosstown Liquor, and a family business that you know has been there. Crosstown Liquor, my father opened that up in, in the late six, or in the late sixties or whatever, so, or early sixties. We've been there almost fifty years, Crosstown Liquor's been there. And, and that the, I want to make a couple of comments that back, a small history lesson on where we're at, or whatever. Burnsville, in the late sixties, the community of Burnsville was here and there was trouble in Bloomington. Bloomington had a concentration of liquor stores. They had four stores on four corner, on the same corner. And Bloomington was having a lot of troubles with their safety and the, you know, public safety and health, and issuance of licenses and different things. And Burnsville was looking at that going, boy, we better look at what we're doing. And they had asked the liquor stores at that time, can you help us adopt a new liquor license? And so then they adopted the liquor license that lasted many years. It was, you know, it was for the freestanding buildings, and then, you know, that, that did is it allowed each owner to have an investment in the city, that they couldn't just walk away from it. And then, you know, and for that investment, and the city would place a one-mile radius around it. And then that would allow the, also that allowed citizens of Burnsville to have a liquor store within a mile or so of their residence. And it would, it would, it would spread them out in the city, so there would not be this concentration that Bloomington was facing, you know? And that's why that law was kind of adopted at that time. And that worked till about two thousand nine, when the big change came in. Then they changed the ordinance, of course, and put in the district. And, you know, now I feel it was already an overconcentration right now up there in the area that's in question, you know, with the, you know, you have four stores up there right now that I think are just, you know, that is too much in there, in that area already, you know? And then we find out that there was, you know, no protection on the ordinance in order to be able to move the license, and, you know, that was kind of thing. And now there's no stores servicing the northeast corner of Burnsville, you know? And these are just things that, you know, it's kind of reminiscent of what we had done unraveling here before our eyes here, you know? And I want to say something about the liquor store, because we're such a family store and a neighborhood store, and I think that's essential in Burnsville, to keep that Burnsville close tie with the community. You know, the people come into the liquor store, and a lot of times, and they're looking for something, they have a cause, they need to raise some money for somebody who has a, a problem, you know, they need a wheelchair, they need something. There's a fundraiser, there's a kind of a constant, as you know here, constantly things helping the community. We're always there to chip in. Now, why do they come there? Because we're approachable. We're, we're, they're store, they, or they know they're here of us, that we can come there, we can, we can meet with you, you know, and then, then we always help out. If we can help them, we always do, you know? And we're there for the people of the community, you know, and in that, in, in that approach, you know? And many times, some people come in and ask questions that have nothing to do with liquor, just because we've been here forever, and people know that we know a lot of different things, whether it's building or whatever. And another, another small example of what we do in working with the city, you know, Mary mentioned about the, the help in the city at Plows, that's recent. Here, just even, well, I don't think it was even a year ago, we were working with the city. One day, a Burnsville police had contacted us and said that somebody had used a stolen credit card at our liquor store the night before. Well, the guy who used it, he got away with it the first time, well, then he happened to call the next day, and he wanted to know if we could deliver. So we immediately picked up the, you can, you can see where it's going. We picked up on it, and we contacted the Burnsville police, and they were very receptive to making a delivery for Crosstown Liquor that day. And so they delivered, they didn't deliver any booze, but the undercover officers at the time, you know, said that they busted a house of stolen cards, and they busted them more than just for stolen cards. And so there's how, I, I'm trying to, we were, they knew they could contact us, and if there was anything we could do, we were there. And they thanked us for all that we had done to help them, and we did this all in an hour. We set this whole operation sting, you know, the sting and the whole thing, it was all set up in less than an hour, you know? And my point of the story isn't, it's just that, you know, this is a, you know, the, the maintenance department can contact us, staff department, you know, the police department contacts us, you know what I mean? We have that, that personal relationship with the people and the citizens, you know, and, and that's what, that's what neighborhoods, small little stores do. Your box stores are not gonna give you that. You know, there's no way they can come in and say, hey, you know, they, they just can't do that, you know? And by allowing a whole cluster of stores, you know, together, you know, that's gonna take away investments from other people in the other areas, you know? I think that there's, the investment issue that other stores already have, and they're gonna, you know, the, the marketplace, and, and how that works out to that, you know? And I also wanted to say that I think that Burnsville already has a bunch, you know, fine liquor stores in the area that are working right now. They're giving all the city what they need. There's nothing there that they can offer that isn't already being offered, you know, for the community. You know, we can buy the same products that they can buy, we can do the same things that they can do, you know? I don't think the city's lacking any, anything in that area. And so, you know, the approval of this license would not, you know, serve the best interest of this community, you know? By the largest concentration of liquor stores, probably in the state, and truly in this area. And, you know, there's no representation up on the other side, you know, this just makes no sense. And I, I think you'd be letting the voting citizens down by, you know, voting for this. So I'm asking the city, the city, the city always asks for our help when they need it, and I'm asking for your help tonight. I'm asking you to deny this proposal or ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Mr. Mark Jacobson. Mr. Jacobson.
Your Honor, we didn't realize that the order was set by that. I think it makes more sense for David Trone, the owner of Total Wine, to come up and speak first. If he and I could switch spots, that would be great.
Okay, I don't see his name on the list, but that's all right. If you're, are you gonna be at the back end, Mr. Jacobson?
His name should be on the list.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. David Trone. Please.
Thank you.
We're very flexible.
You have to get the technology right first. Thank you very much for your time. I'd like to give a quick overview with some pictures, because I figured it's a drive up to Roseville, and also then a very short statement after that to keep things moving. I'm the president of the company, and my brother and our families own the business one hundred percent. The stores are bright and beautiful, and I thought a couple of pictures might help you out on that. This is the market in which we operate, but we didn't start with a hundred and three stores in sixteen states. We started with one store. My dad was a family farmer, we grew up on a farm in Pennsylvania, he had some hard times, he went bankrupt, and we started over. And we grew that from one store, where I was the store manager, and the second store, my brother was the store manager. And we grew it to create a success story that's taken many, many years of hard work. So you can see, we went from the east coast to the west coast, and then now we're working in the Midwest. This is another picture of inside the stores. We really focus on what's new in the market, so we like, think that's very important to highlight. Stores are big, bright, and beautiful. We have all kinds of wines, wines are primary focus. Carry eight thousand wines, three thousand spirits, and twenty-five hundred beers, principally craft beers and imports. But the wines, we carry wines from two dollars and forty-seven cents, right up to over two thousand dollars, Chateau Petrus. So we carry a spectacular array of wines that's not gonna be found elsewhere. They're, of course, kept in temperature, humidity controlled, and wine is certainly our major focus. We do a lot of tastings, we bring in winemakers, we bring in winery owners. We actually hold virtual tastings, we just held one last week, where we had a taste in thirteen states simultaneously with a winemaker in Napa Valley, happening live, right into all of our classrooms around the country, and the customers were tasting the wine and tweeting back quest to the owner of the winery. So we're trying to bring technology into our stores. We think that's an important customer service. We also work on videos, we bring in to show the different wineries themselves. We have tablets in our stores that show wine and food pairings, so you can buy the right wine for the right price for the right occasion. And the craft beer side, we work along with our twenty-five hundred craft beers, all kinds of video, again, supporting that, brew masters, brewery owners, and we really drive local. We carry more local products, local wines here in Minnesota, local beers here in Minnesota than anybody else carries, period. We do the same thing in Texas, more Texas wines, more Texas spirits, Texas beers, the same thing in Washington State, et cetera. So we really partner with our community, whichever state that we happen to be in. The front of the stores are set up like the checkouts in a supermarket. We're very similar to Whole Foods, that's probably the best analogy. Matter of fact, the company did Whole Foods decor and interior design work, did our interior design work. So you might see clearly some similarities. Shopping carts for the customers, and of course, we do a great job on minor identification. We cart everybody a hundred percent here in Roseville, that's our plan in Burnsville, cart everybody one hundred percent. We also lead the nation in shoplifting. We have cameras all over the store, and we run ten basis points on shoplifting, which is world-class. This is a picture of one of our classrooms, we put these in all of our stores, and they do a lot of different things. First of all, it's where we can do classes for the consumer, classes on wine, whether it be Bordeaux, one oh one, Burgundy, Tuscany, California, you name it. We have a whole array of class that we do for the customer. Same with spirits, classes on tequila, single malt scotch, single batch bourbons, all the stuff that customers just love it. that customers just love it. Classes on craft beer, seasonals, IPAs, et cetera. We also use these rooms for the community, community rooms for free. There's meeting space needs we found all over the country, and it's a way we can integrate with the community by offering up our rooms all over the U.S. for community groups such as Rotary, Chamber, Lions to use for free. At the end of the event, we give them a 30-minute wine tasting, free. They usually reward us with their patronage, and it's a win-win for everybody. We also use these classrooms for nonprofits. We donate our classes all the time for nonprofits, and you'll see in a second, this is a major, major focus. We are very, very proud of the work we would do with our communities and our nonprofits in particular. Of course, these are training rooms, too, to train our team, because our team is the key. You can have the best price, you can have the best selection, that's not enough today. What you need today is the best people, and we invest in our people, and that's the key to really get the right folks that are motivated, Nordstrom-type service, that can go in there, talk to you about the right wine for your taste, right price, and for the right occasion. Each year, we take 65 people to Napa Valley for a week. It's hard work. They have to drink over 400 wines and learn about the products, Napa Sonoma. Every two years in May, we take 45 people for two weeks. Start in Rioja, go into Madrid, Rivero, Bordeaux. We go through Beaujolais, Chateau Neuf, Theron, Burgundy, Champenois, out of Paris. Two weeks, they drank, again, hundreds and hundreds of wine, but they learn about the product. They meet the winemakers, they meet the winery owners. It's an investment in team, an investment in people, and we think this is really key to our success. It's not just price, it's not just selection. Yes, we're the best in those areas, but this is what makes us a destination shop, a destination store that people drive to. This is a slide we're very proud of. It's pretty revealing. I listed my sales here since 1991. 1991, I started at $1.7 million, and you can see, last year, I almost hit $1.5 billion. What's unique about this chart is that adds up to 758 store years. And by the way, that's store years of a high-volume stores, not a low volume, but a high-volume stores. Lots of customers, lots of business, 758 years, and during that timeframe, we've had 12 sales to minors, 12. We've had 17 other violations miscellaneous, for a total of 29 violations over 758 years. That's over 170 million, 170 million transactions. Now, that's 29 too many for me, absolutely, but that record is unmatched anywhere in America, and part of that reason why our success on sales to minors, 12 out of 170 million transactions, is we pay our team members. Our front-end team members get paid bonuses every time they card. So, we pay over $1 million a year of bonuses to the front-end team members. This is an important slide, because this is part of our DNA. We do more for our communities, because that's part of our core values. This is money we've donated last year, one year, through the company, $4.1 million to over 4,000 community organizations, which helped them raise $25 million. And we did these with, on the right is a Roseville list, in our first three weeks in Roseville, we've had Big Brothers and Sisters, Leukemia, Lupus, National Kidney, Theater, Habitat for Humanity, and many, many others. This doesn't speak to the money we do on the side, my brother and I personally. This is just through the company, but we're very philanthropic throughout our lives, it's an important part of our life, and at the same time, we charge low prices, and the consumer loves us. This is our charitable giving in Florida. I don't expect you to read it, it's an eye chart, but it gives you a sense of how many organizations that we worked with last year, one year, just in the state of Florida. I can give you another eye chart, California, Arizona, Nevada, North Carolina, et cetera. This is a key point in retail. I had, my life is retail, I get it, I understand metrics, numbers, but this is a really big, big chart. What this shows is, in the second column over, sales per foot, total wine and more, we averaged $1,080 per foot. That's our average on our wine, beer, and spirit stores. You might note that average is higher than Costco, higher than Sam's Club, Best Buy, Whole Foods. We're a regional destination store that drives traffic, because our prices are great, our selection is great, and again, more importantly, our people. So, this is important, but you'll notice the only guys ahead of us are Tiffany and Apple. But look at the size box of their square footage, small boxes. So, when you look at a big box, 25,000 square feet, and the Burnsville site's 28,000 square feet, we're the leader in all of these stores on sales per foot. This is a key slide. It's called Net Promoter Score. It's a metric that retailers use all over the country in America to say, how happy are your customers? Well, your customers go out and promote, say good things about your store. Well, Kmart got a minus 12, okay? We know they'll be out of business one day. We got a 78 in this. That's higher than Trader Joe, higher than Whole Foods, higher than all the grocers, higher than Target, and of course, Costco. So, the Net Promoter Score identifies promoters about our business that feel really good about the business itself through their experience. We're the three-time winner Retailer of the Year. There's not a magazine out there that we haven't won Retailer of the Year. So, that's that. Quickly, what I'd like to say is, there's three reasons why I think Total Wine will be great for Burnsville consumers, and that's one, the market demands, the market demand is there. The customers want a unique destination, and when you look at a unique destination, here's our store in Roseville. Each of those red dots is $1,000 in sales. These are numbers right out of Roseville. Last week, we had 14,000 customers drove to Roseville, 14,000. That's a big number. When you look at the first ring, over 10 miles, over $10 million came outside of the 10-mile ring. Outside the 15-mile ring, over $4 million. From the state of Wisconsin, over the river, over $500,000 is the run rate we're on right now in Roseville. And that's because the combination of what we offer is resonating with the customers. This is a picture of where Burnsville will land. This is our best forecast of Burnsville. Burnsville is listed in the middle. We think 15% of our sales will come out of Burnsville. When you look next to that, the big trade area, the larger we drew in with the red line, we think 55% of the sales will come out of that area, 30% below, and actually, 1% up the I-35 corridor out of Iowa. So, these are big numbers, and they really speak to, you know, where we believe our company can, you know, will pull as a regional draw. The second big, quick point is responsible retailer, it's in our DNA. We talked about 12 minor violations out of 170 million sales over 758 years. That's, I think, the best record in America. We're respected in every one of our communities by every ABC board in America as the best operator, every city we're in, all over the country. End of story. Number three, we have strong community partners, because I understand, I'm in it when I tell my kids, for the LT. I'm in it for the long term. That's what my brother's here for, the long term. That's the way we invest, that's the way we run our business, and being a strong community partner is what makes that successful. 50-plus jobs, 75% of the jobs are full-time. We believe in full-time, because those folks need a good wage, but they also stay, they get benefits, PTO, vacation, disability, et cetera. We think that's important. As a family company, you know, we value deeply our team, our people, and we value our community. And if we do that, we know we'll win in the marketplace. So, we like to say thank you, and we deeply appreciate your time, and we deeply appreciate your support. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. I'm going to go to Ms. Mary Lou Exstrand.
I'm going to remind everyone, and I know that Mr. Trone went over the five minutes, and I'm going to make sure that we try and keep it five minutes, if you can do that, but...
Mayor, Council. Mary Lou Exstrand, 14137 Plymouth Avenue, Burnsville. Just real quickly, I really support Total Wine to come in here. They'd be an outstanding business. I traveled 30 miles to go to the Roseville store, done that twice in two weeks. Pricing is outstanding, service tremendous. They bring definite increase in employment opportunities here and economic growth to the area. I believe that we need more competition to keep the price down, and I know that Total Wine would be a great community supporter of Burnsville, and I sincerely hope that you would approve their application. Thank you.
Mr. W. Payton.
I'm part of the landlord group, and I'm here for questioning your opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Payton. Mr. Philip Jaffe. Mr. Peter Hughes.
It's Herford.
Herford, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Peter Herford, councilman and mayor.
Thank you.
My partners, Phil Jaffe and Whit Payton, the three of us are the landlords of the building where Total Wine is proposing to open this great store. The city of, the property we bought 13 years ago, and as you remember, it had a linens and things in it. When they departed through bankruptcy, it left quite a vacancy. We've been vacant for six years, and we've had many prospective tenants come and go. None of them worked out economics, more importantly, to the satisfaction of our neighbor, who is Target. And through the common use agreement of a parking lot, they have a strong say on who we attract as a tenant. Total Wine, they were enthusiastic for. As a matter of fact, across the country, they're in several shopping centers together, and the obvious factor is that traffic that is generated, that would be generated directly next door to Target. So, Target is enthusiastic. We think that this kind of concentration is what the Burnsville Retail Center is all about. We think it'd be a great fit, and on the other hand, it would be really difficult if they were to go somewhere else, because it'd be a great asset for Burnsville. I would like to answer any questions that you might have.
Probably later, sir.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, my name's Tom Heffelfinger. I office at 225 South Sixth Street in Minneapolis. I am the author and individual who oversaw the due diligence investigation on David Trone, Robert Trone, and their company, RSSI, supervising the investigation work of a dozen former FBI agents. I am not here to take a position, I am here to answer your questions. Unless people have questions, I will stay until that point of the discussion where questions might be appropriate.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Dean Hotner.
Derek Cottler.
Derek Cottler. Okay, it's penmanship, I'm trying to get it.
No problem.
Penmanship.
I failed that class in elementary school.
Yeah, you didn't go to Catholic school.
I did go to Catholic school.
Oh, boy. The nuns did not get you.
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 okay.
Thank you for hearing me tonight. I'm just, I'm here to kind of give an employee perspective of Total Wine. I was born and raised here in Minnesota. When I called my mother to tell her that...
Can you give us your address?
Oh, my address is 9236 10th Street, 10th Avenue South in Bloomington. When I called my mother and told her we were going to be possibly moving into Minnesota, she basically just said, that means you're coming home then, right? And so, right there, I was basically done. If I was being asked to come back, I was, there's no way I could tell my mom I wasn't going to Minnesota, so I was back in Minnesota for sure. Total Wine's been a great place for me to work. I walked into the store almost eight years ago in Florida, followed a girl down to Florida, and I wasn't really thinking it was going to be a career, but it kind of turned into a career for me. It was a great fit once I got there. The reason it was a great fit for me is a lot like my store in Roseville. We have about 50 employees, 70, 75% of those people are full-time with benefits. We offer 50 hours of, every week for our employees, for many of our employees. That's 10 extra hours of overtime that they get. That means they don't have to take a second job somewhere else. They can really concentrate in our store and also at home with their families. It's a fun place to work. The stores are bigger, big and beautiful, and we take pride in that. We like to welcome our people in. We love hearing, you know, people from Wisconsin and Iowa, St. Cloud, Duluth, all these people that we've talked to over the last three weeks, four weeks we've been open. It's been absolutely spectacular to meet and greet with all these people here. One of the other great things about our stores, how knowledgeable our employees are and their thirst for knowledge in the industry. They really love to learn about wine and spirits, and we try to quench that thirst as much as we can. We have trainees with winemakers, we bring people in, and we do tastings all the time with our staff. I've personally been on one of the work trips that David talked about, to California and also to France and Spain, and I can tell you that just being there and being on the ground and in the soil with the farmers and the winemakers makes you absolutely enthusiastic to come back and pass that knowledge on to your staff, pass that knowledge on to the customers, and it comes through in our staff when they talk, when they have customer interactions. The thing that really kept me here for eight years was the fact that Total Wine promotes them within, and they believe in their people. Like I said, I wasn't really looking for maybe a full-time gig with Total Wine when I first started, I was just going there for something, maybe, until I found my feet in Florida. But through a partnership, both me working hard and them investing in me, it really turned out to be a fantastic opportunity for me, going from being just a wine associate in one of the stores to now opening up a new market as a general manager's, really an honor for me, and I appreciate all the faith they put into me. It's also really fantastic when they, with all the donations that they do give to the community, they really let us go out into the community and talk with these people and interact with people at events, so we really become part of the community as managers in the stores. Where we get to go to Make-A-Wish Foundation events, we get to go to the University of Minnesota Wine Fest things, and really talk with people in the community and invite them back into our stores and become kind of integrated into the community. I also just wanted to speak to the preventing of sales to minors. We do a fantastic job, I believe, in not allowing any type of minors purchasing alcohol in our stores. We have a zero-tolerance policy, so if someone does sell to a minor in our stores, which obviously, as David said, doesn't happen very often, they are terminated. And we don't ask our employees to know a lot about a lot of different licenses, like some other establishments might do. We basically just have them focus on the Minnesota state driver's license. Anything besides that, a manager has to be involved to approve the transaction, really to make sure that they only have to be an expert on one ID. And really, the last thing that I just wanted to say was that, you know, Total Wine has ended up being a great career for me. I think it'll be a great career path for a lot of Minnesotans here in the state. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mark Jacobson, and please don't repeat everything else that Mr. Trone has said.
I promise I won't do that. Among other things, I don't have a slideshow. Madam Mayor, members of the council, I'm Mark Jacobson. I'm an attorney for Total Wine, and I office at 80 South Eighth Street in Minneapolis. I want to put two things in, provide a little context here on two items. One is Total Wine's record on public safety, because that's a concern that's been expressed here, and I know it's a concern of a number of you, and I want to do that by comparing a little bit. We just got information back from the state and from the city of Bloomington, and we haven't had a chance to give it to you, but I want to give you some snippets of it tonight.
And we haven't had a chance to give it to you, but I want to give you some snippets of it tonight. Take a couple of existing Bloomington, or Burnsville stores. Haskell's has thirteen liquor stores in Minnesota. Since 2010, it's had eight violations for sales to minors. There are forty-one MGM liquor stores in Minnesota. Since 2010, they've had eight violations for sales to minors. And they've had another seven that they describe as failed compliance check. I'm guessing those are sales to minors as well. Since 2010, Costco has had two violations for sales to minors in a single store in Maple Grove. Now the comparison. During that same period since 2010, in its hundred and three stores, Total Wine has had one violation for a sale to a minor. Your police chief has taken a look at that issue, whether there's anything about Total Wine that will create some issue with public health and public safety, and given his opinion on that as well. And I'd urge you to just take a look at that. The second thing I want to talk about very briefly is this issue of competition. Because much of what you hear is really all about avoiding competition. Competition, as you know, helps your community and its citizens. And the fact of the matter is that Total Wine competes far more against big stores that will be closest to it, like Haskell's and MGM and Costco, than it does against local community liquor stores. In fact, we submitted some materials to you that, on that issue, where we looked at a couple of our oldest stores. Our two oldest stores, established in 1991, have thirteen other liquor stores within a three-mile radius. Some that have been there the whole time, some that have moved in since we were there because apparently folks saw an opportunity to make money in that competitive environment. It's not really the case that allowing Total Wine in eliminates the local mom-and-pop stores. And you've had experience with that. You've had sort of a preview of this whole thing in looking at the Costco application in 2009. And I know you dealt with many of these issues. I'd point out to you that MGM left when Costco came in. And then apparently decided that competition with a big box was possible because they moved back. The record doesn't really tell you that Total Wine, the competition from Total Wine will be an issue at all. We have provided you a huge amount of material, I know. We're happy to answer any questions that you might have. We believe we've met all of the conditions necessary for granting a license. And we ask in that regard that you hold us to the same standard you apply to all other licensed applicants. We're not asking for a lower standard of any kind, and it would be unfair to apply a higher standard to us. What we're asking you to do is just do what is fair and equitable for all Burnsville citizens. And we believe that that right, fair thing to do here is to vote in favor of granting the liquor license to Total Wine and vote in favor eventually of granting the conditional use permit for Total Wine. And so we'll ask for your vote in favor of both of those things.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Stephen Burwell.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. My name is Steve Burwell. I'm a lifetime resident of Roseville. I live at 2482 Albert Street in Roseville. For the past twenty-nine years, my family and I have operated Fairview Wine and Spirits. We're about twelve hundred feet north of the new Total Wine store in Roseville. In the past thirty years, I think that I probably attended every public hearing in our city for the, for liquor, an off-sale liquor license application in the city of Roseville. I've been to every one of them. And recently, I've been hearing from different council members and maybe our former mayor, and talking about free competition, free competition in our industry. And they say that, and they have said, and most very recently, that it is not the role of the city council to determine how many liquor stores there are. We have a council member in Roseville that would like to take the lid off our current ten and open it up to an unlimited number, as well as allowing liquor stores to build across the street from one another or just up the street, as it is in the case with Total Wine and S. They talk about free market and free competition. But I don't know if you realize that in our industry, as unique as it is, we don't really have a free market. We don't have a free competition because we've always got the government looking over our shoulder in nearly every facet of our business. Of course, to begin with, we've got the age restriction. That's governed by the state of Minnesota, and while the federal government today put pressure on the states to raise it to twenty-one. I remember when I was eighteen years old, the next day, it was devastating. It was just terrible for the communities as soon as they started going to eighteen years old. Our hours of operation, the state dictates to us, our hours of operation. You can't sell before eight, after ten o'clock at night. We're open seventy-five to eighty-four hours a week right now. It's a long and expensive schedule to maintain, especially for independent retailers. We're open six days a week. Thankfully, we're not open on the seventh day, like a lot of retailers, the big-box guys want to do. We're subject to compliance checks. I agree with compliance checks and the importance of them to keep retailers on their toes and to make sure that alcohol isn't getting into the hands of young people. We're licensed only to sell certain products. You know, in the state of Minnesota, you can't sell a bag of chips or a Slim J. You can't even sell a deck of cards in a liquor store in Minnesota. So we're real limited, again, by state law. We collect additional taxes. We collect an additional two and a half percent sales tax for the Metrodome that they've torn down now. But we're still paying or collecting the additional sales tax. Again, it's the state of Minnesota on us. The state dictates, whether you, you probably don't realize this, but the credit terms, that we have to pay our wholesalers. They tell us, "You got to pay in thirty days. If you don't pay in thirty days, then you're going to, your name goes into the state, and nobody in the state can sell you a thing until you're current with your wholesalers." And of course, it's C O D. for beer, another state law. But I'm getting at, we have all these restrictions on the state. We have restrictions on locations, mostly in the communities that they operate. You don't build across the street from a church, you don't go across from the school or a city park. And there should be restrictions on the density of alcohol licenses in every community. You got to remember that these people come into town, or I mean, the local people, and they make huge investments into their business. And then all of a sudden, somebody comes into town from another state and want to plop themselves right in the middle of an already dense area. Now, I don't have any ties to Burnsville. I'm just speaking from my own experience in Roseville. But, you know, from an economic development standpoint, I think that it's a bad plan for the city of Burnsville. I think that it's a bad plan for the community. The current licensees in Burnsville have given a lot to the community. I don't know, you know, if it's totaled four million dollars last year, probably not. But the independent retailers are here, day in and day out for the community, for the parks, the nonprofits, for the people who have a dying son in the hospital. Anytime you go into the independent retailers, you gain support from them. And that's the way it is in Roseville, too. I think that the city has a responsibility to be loyal to their current licensees. It's very important. Like I said, they've been here for you, and I think that you should be here for them. And as far as things go in Roseville, our city council told me specifically at one of our last meetings with Total Wine, and I believe the meeting was in January, they said, "Oh, Steve, you'll be okay. You give a lot to the community. You've been here for twenty-nine years. You don't have to worry about your business." And I can tell you, members of the council, nothing can be further from the truth. Don't be misled by this idea that the local liquor stores are kind of a flyover area for the Total Wine customers, that people that are coming from thirty miles away. That's very true, they are coming from thirty miles away, but they're taking from other independent retailers thirty miles away. I appreciate the opportunity to talk, being that I'm not from the neighborhood. And if you're ever in Roseville, please stop at Fairview Wine and Spirits. We're twelve hundred feet north of Total Wine. And we're easy to get in and easy to get out. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Bill Griffith.
Could I get the overhead projector?
Yes. Ms. Collins is going to help you.
I appreciate that.
Address for the record, Mr. Griffith, please.
Yes, Madam Mayor, councilmembers, my name is Bill Griffith, and my office is at 1500 Wells Fargo Plaza in neighboring Bloomington. And I don't think you should ever stop talking about when they try to grab that power plant from you. I heard it tonight. All right. Thank you, Ms. Collins, I appreciate it. I'm going to try and be brief. You've had, you've been inundated, it's fair to say, with paperwork, documents. I don't imagine there's been something in your recent memory that has generated so much correspondence in paper. And I appreciate your patience and your diligence in reviewing those materials. I appreciate your staff's diligence in reviewing those materials. So I will try and be brief. But I do have a number of points I need to make. I cut them from nine to four this evening in practicing my presentation, so. First of all, I think it's fair to say that competition is healthy for a community. And none of my, our members, and they all have the blue badges, none of our members are afraid of competition. In fact, they compete every day. They compete in close proximity to each other. They work on pricing and marketing, strategies for service. They certainly work on diligence, on compliance. And so that's not the question here this evening. The question is, what is fair competition? What is a balanced land use? How much is too much? And you're going to hear again from our members that five stores in one half-mile is too much of a concentration of retail liquor. And that is our basic premise. And I've got some things to support that, and I want to walk through my arguments. So what we ask is that you turn down this application based upon that concentration of five stores, if you approve this license, in one half-mile. We don't believe that's consistent with your discussions in 2009. We don't believe that's consistent with your comprehensive plan. We don't believe that's consistent with your zoning ordinance in granting the P U D, which says you basically aren't going to do harm to other businesses. Okay? So we think, and we know from the materials we've submitted to you, and in fact, your staff included a statement that you have broad discretion over this decision. This is not something like a building permit that's issued over the counter. This is not something even like a site plan approval, that if it meets the conditions, it's approved. This is something that the Minnesota courts, both the Supreme Court and the Court of Appeals, have repeatedly said, "You have the discretion to say yes or no," based on concentration, based on violations, based upon your concerns to protect your community. And so I want to make that very clear as you hear my remarks. The first thing I want to talk about are violations. Now, we presented a very long table, and we tried to summarize the violations in several states. We updated that as more information was made available. This was all done by our office on public data requests to public authorities. This document in red indicates those violations that were not disclosed in the application, and there are several. Obviously, Mr. Heffelfinger's report did disclose many of those after the fact. These are violations from RSSI. Mr. Heffelfinger reported that he did an investigation, not only on behalf of the applicant, but RSSI. As you can see, these are all the violations that were not disclosed, in yellow. And they were not disclosed by Waypoint, who is working at the direction of Mr. Heffelfinger. Here's the second page, highlighting those violations that were not disclosed and were not later disclosed by Waypoint. Why is this important? It's important that any applicant for a liquor license makes a full and complete disclosure of their violations, not just of the applicant, and I'll show you a chart that shows how the applicant is related to RSSI, but for related companies. Now, RSSI is owned in the same fashion as the applicant. And certainly, if I misstate anything, I imagine there's, people will correct the record. But here is Retail Services and Systems, providing management, marketing, and accounting for all of these entities that hold liquor licenses across the United States. Now, here's Minnesota Fine Wine and Spirits, the applicant tonight before you. And so your staff properly investigated Minnesota Fine Wine and Spirits. But our position is, as soon as you learned that RSSI is a significant-related company with the same owners, in fact, has operating agreements with the licensees, you need to go beyond the shell. And you need to start dig, to dig behind the entities that are going to be operating and managing a significant business in your community. And that is our submission to the city. And we made that same statement last evening in response to Sandra Johnson's letter, in which she has decided and made a finding that not only do the beneficiaries of that trust, the ninety percent owners of the applicant need to be investigated, but also RSSI, also the trustees, also the trust guarantors. Those are all entities that have not been fully investigated by the city of Burnsville. I'll leave it to your city attorney to address that question. We think Sandra Johnson, in spending significant time, almost five months, now she has a full-time staff working with her, has determined that that, that based on that, the application was incomplete. As you know, in Bloomington, that application has been pulled. And it's my understanding, you can question the applicant, that they intend to submit it with the additional information that's been required and requested by the city attorney there. What is my point? My point is, this is a very elaborate ownership scheme. It should be fully investigated, all component parts, and all the violations disclosed, not just those of the shell that was created in Minnesota to hold the license, but all of the component parts of this very large business operation. Until you do that, it's our position that the application is not complete, nor is the investigation of this applicant. So if you, if you believe that that is a significant matter, if you believe that those concerns are significant, then you should either deny this license tonight or continue it for further investigation. Now I want to turn to, I don't want to go through violations related to selling potato chips without a license or pretzels. I want to focus on four significant violations. And I've addressed this to you in letters, so I won't spend a lot of time on it. But I think it's important, it's important because it was not reported to either the city of Roseville or the city of Bloomington until we discovered the violations and presented that data. This is a data sheet, a tracking sheet, from the Department of Law and Public Safety from the state of New Jersey. And what it says here is that there is a fine of $250,000 imposed on the operations in New Jersey in lieu of a thirty-day suspension for failure to maintain and produce true books of account. This is another licensee, $250,000 in lieu of a thirty-day suspension. Same claim, failure to maintain and produce true books of account, and a third, and a fourth. And these are the violations that total over a million dollars, or total a million dollars in New Jersey. Now, we've heard them, we've heard the attorneys for the applicant claim that this is part of a settlement, that they paid a million dollars to the state of New Jersey to reimburse the state for their costing investigating Total Wine. But none of my members, none of the members of M L B A have been subject to a similar fine. And so we've got to put some of the comments about their stellar record in balance with these very significant violations that were not disclosed until our office discovered them through data practices requests. The law in Minnesota is, if you as a city find that those violations in other communities are significant and substantial, that is a legal basis alone on which to deny this application. You don't have to go any further than that. Obviously, we think you should. You should go further than that. But if you decided tonight that those violations concern you, the fact that they were not reported until they were discovered, they were reported essentially after the fact, and then they attempted to characterize them as something, I don't know, insignificant, that is a basis for you to certainly pause, but it's also a basis on which you can deny the application. My next point is the point that you've been hearing all evening, and I'll show it to you graphically. This is 2009 in the Burnsville Center area. This is the location of MGM. In 2009, one liquor retailer in the Burnsville Center area. The city modifies its ordinances in discussions with the local retailers. One of the things you said in that discussion is, "We don't want to hurt the existing retailers." You said that we don't want to create disinvestment in those businesses. That's in the record. So, five years later, we have, I believe this is cut. So, five years later, we have, I believe this is Cub Foods, Costco, MGM, Haskell's, the proposed location of Total Wine, I think you could throw a stone or run a shopping cart between them, and then Byerly's over in this corner. This is just the Burnsville Center area. Okay? This doesn't, this doesn't pick up all of these circles that you've discussed over the years, serving these neighborhoods. That is a very significant concentration of retail liquor stores in a very small area, one-half-mile radius in your community. Five stores, if you approve that tonight. In addition, what's significant to me, and I hope to you, is this graphic. Let's see if I can get it, get north as up, showing the Red Hawk Liquor location that's closed in your community. If that store didn't close, there wouldn't be a license for this location. In fact, what's interesting is there's a letter in, in the record that says, we're relinquishing our license, and our assets have been purchased, that's the Red Hawk, assets have been purchased by Minnesota Fine Wine and Spirits, and so we're relinquishing our license, and five days later, Total Wine makes their application. Now, I know you can't sell licenses in Burnsville. Obviously, it was timed, so they would have that license available to them. The owner of that store for 30 years, the landlord who's here tonight, will tell you that he also came down to City Hall to see if he could make application, and he was told he could not make application for the store that had a license for all those years. Why? Because it was timed so that that, that license could be secured and essentially moved to the Burnsville Center area, where there's now this potential concentration of five stores. I think that's very significant, and I will just ask you rhetorically, was that your intent in 2009? That those licenses could be picked up, moved, and concentrated into the Burnsville Center area? I don't believe that's the case. My members who participated in those discussions don't believe it was the case. The concentration of liquor stores in a community has been found by the Minnesota Supreme Court in the Royalty case as a legal basis for denial. So I would ask you, do you feel that your community in the Burnsville Center area is well-served by the four stores that are there, including Costco, and MGM, and Cub, and Haskell's? If you answer yes, then you have a basis to turn down this license. In fact, that could be your only basis, and the Minnesota Supreme Court would uphold you. That is good law. In fact, I looked through seven cases tonight in my preparations, liquor license cases, and in only one case did the courts turn down or overturn, overturn the city of Minneapolis. And it was a case, I think it's the Wadja case, and it's, it's a little bit humorous because in the case, the, the, the statement in the City Hall was, well, you know, the, the store is owned by a woman, and she can't keep control of her patrons, and therefore, you know, she shouldn't have this license. We don't think that she can keep control of the patrons. And obviously, that's out of bounds. Okay? That the gender would be a basis to turn down an, an application? That's not the case here. We have very substantial concerns, very substantial issues, and it's not based upon gender or any protected class. Just a couple more points, Mayor.
We're getting, I'm trying to think of what, how much time I gave Mr. Trone, so I'm...
Fifteen minutes you gave him, so I'll...
Yes, I know.
I'll wrap it up in that same amount of time. Thank you.
I know, because I have my, watch out.
You're a good timekeeper, Mayor, and I appreciate that.
Yes.
How much time do I have?
We'll give, we'll give you the same amount of time I gave Mr. Trone, and so you have about, if you can do it, wrap it up in three minutes.
I can do that. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay.
Balanced land use. You know that your comp plan calls for a balanced land use to protect the economic interests of the city. The findings that you have to make in the next application under the PUD are that the liquor store will not be detrimental to the general welfare of the city or the neighborhood. You're going to hear from many people that it's detrimental to both. You have to make a statement or a finding that the liquor store use is harmonious with the general and specific objectives of the comprehensive plan. Again, for the case of the balanced land use, this is not a balanced land use to have five stores in one-half-mile. I told you how the application is incomplete based upon the review of the Bloomington City Attorney. I think that it should be turned down on that basis alone. But again, setting all of that aside, even setting aside the 2009 ordinance, you have discretion, because this is a privilege, not a right, and we've said that in our materials. In Minnesota, I don't know about other states, but in Minnesota, it's a privilege, not a right, to hold a liquor license. Why? Because it's highly regulated, it's an issue of public safety. You look at the concentration of pawn shops, you look at the concentration of tobacco sales, you look at the concentration, I think of, who could lounges is, is on the agenda, or maybe it's already been addressed. But if you can look at the concentration of those uses, you can look at the concentration of liquor sales in your community. Finally, Madam Mayor, I think that, I think your staff has done an adequate job. I think their job is to look at the, the application and say whether it's complete or not. That's an administrative task, and I don't fault them for that. They have many things in front of them, and, and they did an adequate job. Do we wish they would have gone further? Yes. But you have a different task in front of you. You have a task, because you are the decision-makers and the policymakers in this community, to protect your community, to ensure a balanced land use, and to ensure that there's not a concentration of five stores in a one-half-mile area. I appreciate your indulgence and the time, and certainly your patience in going through all of our materials. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith. Next is Mr. Frank Ball.
Good evening, Mayor Kautz, and council members. My name is Frank Ball. I'm the executive director of the Minnesota Licensed Beverage Association, and we appreciate you taking the time this evening to, to hear this to, to the end. You've also been the recipient of a lot of information that we've been, we've been sending you as well. We are a trade association with over 1,500 members peppered across the 87 counties of Minnesota, both on- and off-sale retail liquor stores in Minnesota. We are the tier that sells liquor to the public. Out of the three-tiered structure, we're the, we're the tier that actually sells to the, your publics. We're the third tier of the highly-regulated three-tiered structure of an industry for the distribution of alcohol to your citizens. We take this profession very serious for a good reason. This is not about tires, batteries, and accessories. It's about controlled substance, which is highly regulated. These businesses have a massive responsibility to the public safety of your citizens. Oversaturating a community with alcohol sales is a major factor that should be in your decision. I've been in law enforcement for over 35 years. In fact, I was the director of Alcohol and Gambling Enforcement for several years, and I'm very familiar with the legal distribution of alcohol and responsibilities of your license holders, especially in these larger suburban communities. We also have numbers. In your community in particular, we have, at this meeting tonight, you have over 162 collective years of dedicated adult beverage retailers here before you. 162 years. They want to make you, they, they want you to make a decision on their future of their businesses in your city. 162 years of paying taxes, 162 years of living in your neighborhoods, attending your churches, sending the children to your schools, and being ambassadors for your great city. These are your citizens before you this evening, your retail business people. They're here tonight in mass to ask for your support. You know them. You've heard from them, and now they wish to make one more plea to, plea to you. And please listen to them. I'm not from here, but I represent the other retail stores across the state of Minnesota, and the, the playing field has changed. My role here tonight, the Minnesota Licensed Beverage Association opposes the liquor license application of Total Wine and Moore for a variety of reasons, including the company's pattern of aggressive practices. Total Wine has tried to paint the MLB's opposition as anti-competitive, which is untrue. The MLB's members are expected to operate their businesses in a strict regulatory environment, and we want to ensure that these rules are applied to all operators in the market or operators coming into the Minnesota market. Total Wine has proven repeatedly that they're every intention to push the limits of regulations, often exceeding that limit. We have made available to you and your staff information that we have been provided by other jurisdictions across the United States, including identifying massive fines or settlements with liquor license authorities for businesses owned or affiliated with the owners of Total Wine. In Minnesota, the decision to grant a liquor license is made at the local level, not the state. I want to repeat that. The state does not approve this liquor license, it has been reduced to the municipalities. The local communities have the final word on who and how liquor is distributed. This is you, the city's decision-makers. You're the decision-makers of your community. The voters elected you to make those decisions that are in the best interest, in, interest of your community and best for your businesses located within your jurisdiction. We hope you listen to what over 162 years of dedicated businessmen and women from your community has to say. Look at them closely, as they testify to you tonight. And if you approve this license for Total Wine, four of them will be smashed out of business by this time next year. Thank you for your time, and I appreciate your opportunity to, to address your...
And you stayed on time.
Thank you.
So, and before you leave, your address for the record, please, Mr. Ball.
1986 Sloan in St. Paul.
Okay. Mr. Maglish.
Terry Maglish. Name an address for the record, please.
Madam Mayor, member of the Burnsville City Council, my name is Terry Maglish. I live at 473 Willoughby Way, Hopkins, Minnesota. I'm not probably going to spend the three minutes that I'm allotted, because we've talked about so many things, and I'll just be repeating stuff that everybody's already said. But as far as the competition is concerned, Total Wine obviously has made a tremendous presentation here. But my argument is, is not really based on competition. My argument is based on, we've been living under an ordinance that was passed in 2009, and if they had come into Burnsville, bought Red Hawk Liquor, made their application, went through all the necessary background checks and passed, came to the city council and were issued the license, they'd be operating where that store license was issued 30 years ago, up on Cliff Road, and I wouldn't be standing here talking about the problems that I have with Total Wine. They'd be in business, and I'd be operating my store. To me, the big issue is, and you've heard this many times, so I'll just be as quick and brief as I can, the concentration doesn't seem to be, to be, be practical. I went through all the changes over the years. I've been on the corner of County Road 42 and Burnhaven Drive for over 35 years. We've owned that corner, that store. And we've seen the changes in demographics. I still believe in a healthy competitive environment, but I don't believe five stores in a six-block radius is going to be a healthy business environment. And it's almost as if the city is abandoning the 09 ordinance that was passed and licensing an overly competitive environment. If, if Total Wine was allowed in the city, in, in a different part of the town, that would, might be a, a different situation. But my basic argument is that it's just too densely populated where our current store is, and I would respectfully ask for you to deny the application. And in closing, all across the United States of America, people are advocating, governments advocating, supporting small business. That's been the lifeblood of our entire country. I, like Mr. Trone and my brother, started with one store. They've been a whole lot more successful than we have, but we've been at this about as long as the Trones have. And we believe in small business. And I think we will probably be severely hurt, but there's going to be a lot of little stores that will be severely damaged by this over-concentration of off-sale liquor stores in Burnsville. So I respectfully ask you to deny that application. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Maglish. Mr. Jay Nelson. And remember your address for the record, please.
Sure. This is my wife, Kathy.
Hi.
That's Jay Nelson, Kathy Nelson, and our store address is 13947 Aldert's Avenue South in Burnsville. I guess I'm pop, and she's mom, in regards to what I've heard some stores refer to tonight. We are the proud franchise owners of Haskell's Burnsville, and that is a franchise that we own. It's not a corporate store. We have 14 full-time, part-time employees that depend on our business. We are part of the Haskell's family of 14 stores that has operated in the Twin Cities since 1934. 80 years of industry and community leadership. We opened our store in Burnsville on February 22nd, 2011. Two years, or three years now, three years and two months that we've been successfully operating that store. In that time, we have become an integral and active part of this community. Some of us live here, some of us coach teams here, some of us sponsor teams here. We sponsor events, we volunteer, we donate, we contribute. We're part of this community in many, many ways. My theme tonight, and I'll again try to keep this to three minutes or thereabouts, a lot of these things have been touched on, so I'll try to skip through them as, as I go. But my theme and the impression that I'd like to leave with you is common sense. The, the attorneys have presented wonderful, colorful cases of, of information that are extremely important on both sides, I'm sure. But let's step back and take a look at common sense, and then also give us a chance to make several more important points that we think that we should all talk about. The decision you are making tonight is a really big deal, and I've got that highlighted in, in black bold letters. It, it is a really big deal. I'm told that there are people here from Apple Valley, there are people here from Bloomington, there are people here from Lakeville, there are people here from Savage, there are people here from Woodbury, there are people here from all over the Twin Cities. And why? They're here to support, to support you. They're here to support us. Please vote accordingly and show them what we already know, and that is that we have strong leadership in Burnsville. Here's a point that's been touched on, but there's a couple of things I think I'm going to add to it that weren't mentioned. Yes, indeed, we have all been inundated, inundated with, with data points. We've, we've got reams of paperwork that we've all received, and it's just been incredible. I've never experienced anything like this in my life. But at a minimum, we're hoping that your review has highlighted some questionable patterns and trends that demand a closer look. I'm, I'm happy to report that our store has passed every compliance check since opening, and we have no violations or settlements on record, sealed or otherwise. Patterns and trends are important. I'm a believer that the best indicator of future behavior is past behavior. Point number three, again, common sense. Why would any business applicant, in particular, an off-sale applicant involving the heavily-regulated controlled substances and space of alcohol, need to hire an army of lobbyists, attorneys, marketing, and PR people to convince you, convince us of their worthiness to operate in our city? After 23 years in business, shouldn't one's record stand on its own? Tonight, you're going to hear from wonderful examples of 20-year, 30-year, 50-plus-year business people in Burnsville that have been in this business that exemplify integrity and operating records that stand on their own. Point number four, what is the value proposition of the applicant? What is unique and/or one-of-a-kind service or product that they bring to the city of Burnsville that is not already being provided or fulfilled by the incumbents that are already here doing a good job? I, I didn't hear a clear value proposition of anything that was different. We're all doing that. We're, we're all doing a fine job of providing service to this community. And one point about competition, and I want to clarify that, and it's been talked about. We, we already compete, and we compete hard. Nobody in this room is afraid of competition. Nobody. We just want to, simply are interested in ensuring that all the rules, all the regulations, and the business practices are fair and applied equitably to all parties. That's important to us. Question for all of you that, that I've been thinking about, and again, common sense. Do your local constituents really want more retail off-sale liquor establishments in the city of Burnsville? Will more off-sale liquor establishments be beneficial to the health and well-being of our citizens? Prior to this event, and, and the blitz that's going on between both parties here, had you received any phone calls, any emails, any letters, anything like that, from anyone telling you that we need more liquor stores in Burnsville? If the applicant were allowed to open a megastore, a large grocery store-sized liquor store, 28,000 square feet, I heard tonight for the first time, you know, we've talked about the density issues, that is extremely important. I wanted to add to that, I believe this would be one of the largest concentrations of retail liquor sales in the state, possibly, possibly the entire Midwest. Is this something that we want, the city of Burnsville, that you want the city of Burnsville to be known for, is its concentration of liquor stores? The zone is already well-served, and we've talked about the companies that are within that zone. On a personal note, Kathy and I, we made an all-in and significant investment in this business based upon what was presented as the intent of the 2009 ordinance and the reorganization that occurred at that time, allocating off-sale licenses in the city of Burnsville. Please do not forget or disregard the importance of this ordinance and its original intent.
You have a minute.
You have a minute to wrap it up.
Last point. Here's something I've been having a problem with, and it's a real head-scratcher for me, is what happened to Red Hawk Liquor and Wine? I mean, what exactly happened? Do you know all the details? Was there some kind of coordinated transaction that allowed for the off-sale license to be returned to the city and then almost immediately applied for? That's never been clear. Final, final point, last thing. Denial is appropriate, denial is justified, denial is required. And a quote to end with, and this is a quote by Albert Einstein, he's not only intelligent, but he's also very much a common sense person. Whoever is careless with the truth in small matters cannot be trusted with important matters. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Ms. Deborah Hunter-Cook? Yes, please, give us your name and address for the record.
I certainly will. Deborah Hunter-Cook, 12805 Country View Lane, and that is in Burnsville. Longtime member of Burnsville, raised my children here. I'm here to stand in support of the approval of the license of Total Wine. I'm on two main points, and I'll be brief. One is from a competition standpoint. We are definitely in an era where the internet and free access to information has changed the way we do business. Just today, I went online, purchased a new computer for my daughter that is graduating from college and going off to medical school. I spent the entire day searching. I was on Best Buy, I was on Office Depot, Walmart, stopped into Walmart in the store and decided, and of course, I purchased on Amazon through a third-party vendor, and I'm pleased with the computer that I purchased. I bring that up because, again, it's back to, from a competition standpoint, as a consumer, I'm looking for value, I'm looking for selection, I'm looking for service. Whatever I might feel as, again, a consumer, as a citizen in this great country is important to me. I now feel like it's my right or it's to have access to that. And so, again, from a competition side standpoint, I don't feel that it's city council. I appreciate your role that you have, the independence, I appreciate the situation that you're in. As a consumer, I have to say that it's my, it's my choice, it's my responsibility, it's my right to spend my money. I'm, and if I choose to travel 30 miles up to Roseville, and I have been up to that very fine wine store, then that's what I'm going to do. And it doesn't really matter whether it's on the old Red Hawk location or it's in the retail selection, unless I'm, you know, simply looking for convenience, I'm going to shop where I feel like I need to shop. And unfortunately, I mean, that's just the world that we're living in. You can talk to Best Buy, you can talk to Target, talk to probably a lot of retailers that are feeling the very same situation that you're feeling. And again, the second thing is I just do want to, as a consumer, give my support for Total Wine. I was up at that store, and it was a very nice store. It's fun to be in, a large selection, very competitive, talking to, I had my daughter was, had a choice of wine that she wanted me to get, and I was unfamiliar, and she told me the price that I should look at, and the price was significantly less than she had asked for when she then came to my house, and she was amazed by the price. Again, it's large selection, and it's really fun, and I mean, it's really a nice store. So I'm anticipating...
One minute.
...anticipating an approval of your vote, because if not, and again, that's keeping money here in the city and its tax revenue. I think that there will be a significant amount of people that will either continue to search on the internet and purchase as we can, or actually just travel via the freeway a few minutes and go to the Total Wine there. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mike Moore and Dave Hauptman.
Well, Mayor, council people. My name is Mike Moore, 12400 Nicollet Avenue, been in Burnsville for 36 years. I'm first generation, my son is out here with my grandson, his wife, my granddaughter, hopefully third generation. What more can I say here? I don't want to repeat everything. We're going to get out of here within three minutes. And besides, I got to get up tomorrow morning and vacuum the store. So I don't want to, I want to be out of here as early as you guys can, too. This is not a good situation we've been here. I've invested in this community twice now. Once when I came here in 1978 and bought the Red Lion, which was 2,400 square feet, and once 10 years ago when we built the one that's 7,000-plus square feet. And we, we weren't quite sure we liked what the heart of the city was at first, but after listening to the vision from council and the mayor, we went along with that vision. We've invested a large amount of money in that, and we hope that you would see that being here for as many years as we have, that we're here for the long run, we're here for the community. This is my town, and, damn it, I want to stay here. And now I'm going to give it to Harp.
That's not my real name.[985.66][985.66](Laughter).
Yes, Mr. Dave Hauptman.
My name is David Hauptman. I reside at 14410 Holiday Court, Apple Valley, Minnesota. I want to thank the council and Madam Mayor for letting us speak tonight. I want to thank our supporters in the group here for supporting us over all the years. I'm going to read this because my wife, I got home tonight, my wife says, "Do you have your notes ready?" And I says, "Honey, I can't remember three things I'm supposed to go to the grocery store for." So I wrote it all down, so I'm just going to read a brief statement. "We feel fortunate for being, for the business we've had in Burnsville for the last 36 years. We've seen a lot of change. Back in 2008, when Costco wanted to come into the market, there was not a liquor license available for them. The city felt the need to look at an outdated liquor license and invite the city liquor store owners to participate in the workshop, the city staff, to see what ideas would work and what would be supported. Again, this is why we do business in Burnsville. After much discussion, the new ordinance was drafted. It would add four new licenses to the Burnsville Center Business District. There was competition, convenience, and fresh new faces, Haskell's, Byer Lease, Costco, and Cub. This industry still had regulation and balance. The community was well-served. And what a great community. Its people support the businesses, the businesses support the community. In talking with these other liquor store owners, I've heard similar stories about giving back to the community. We support our churches and school districts when they need help with charity events. We support individual charities for families when they face tragedy in their lives and need financial support. We support our rotary clubs, our local chambers for their charities. That's what we do. That's what this community, that's what this community does. Getting back to the 2008 ordinance, I don't believe it was the intent of the ordinance to put that neighborhood store, that neighborhood liquor license in a retail district with five other stores. I don't see how this benefits, benefits the city of Burnsville. It needs regulation and balance. I'm all about free market and economic development, but not at the cost of hurting local businesses who have supported this community for years. The jobs gained will be jobs lost. I see no benefit. We just look for your support tonight. Thank you."
Thank you. Thank you.
Mom told me to never point, but I want to thank you, 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 and you for your time very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And your name and address for the record, please.
I was going to ask, do they all have a copy of this letter? I think they should have it in their file, because I'm going to discuss that letter. Okay. My name is Kevin, let me get my glasses on. My name is Kevin Bresnahan. I live at 717665 Virgus Avenue in Jordan, Minnesota. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council, Heather, I also want to recommend you on, thank you for your staff for being helpful when I needed them. I met with a lot of staff. And I'll tell you a little about myself. I own the property at 2900 East Cliff Road, which is a former liquor store, Red Hawk. I leased that to them 10 years ago. Before that, I owned the liquor store. I applied for the license in 1977 when I was 21-years-old, and Mr. Joe Cannelli was my neighbor. So from, in 1977 to 2004, 27 years I owned that liquor store. I also have been in business since 1977 to 2013 with stores in Prior Lake. 35 years in the business. And what I want to do is, we talk about the ordinance. Back in the original investment, when the council did this, I was one of the original guys on it. And they took the city and decided that we were going to open up some stores. But they wanted a spaceman in the city. So back then, we made the round squares. Everybody had the round squares with a mile radius. And the reason they did that is that they could serve people in all parts of the city. That was the reason they did that. And at the time, I was 23-years-old, and they made me buy a freestanding building. Huge investment at the time for a young man, but I did it, and I made it work. So I still have that investment sitting there today. I've been paying property taxes on that investment for 35 years. And the other reason they did that, and it is true, they wanted the citizens of the city of Burnsville to have a space to go within one-mile radius that they could get a consumed beverage that was controlled by the city and the state. Also, the laws enforcement agency at that time really wanted freestanding buildings because it was much more easier to protect a freestanding building, walk around the building, than working in a big square. I actually moved out of a strip mall to that spot and was made to do that. During that time, what they really wanted to try to make was neighborhood liquor stores. And I think they did that, because things like I had doing, I, Mary Mother Church, I donated huge things up there, but they were in my district up there. We had River Hills Days. The Garage Sales, everybody knows about them, they did them for years. Well, I had signs up and posters and shook hands. The PTA for the local school down the street from me. The Bite of Burnsville, I did wine tastings for them, and it was belong to the chamber. The Burnsville Fire Mystery, I worked right along with Kirk Detleson back then. So these are all things that, actually, all these small guys in the community with their stores have donated to their neighborhoods. And, you know, at the same time, I watched it in 2009 when you did this, you still left those neighborhood stores. And I, and I think that's great. I think that serves the city well. You know, I'd have John Smith and John come in, and they just finished mowing their lawn. Well, they were neighbors. They came into a neighborhood store. And I also want to get into the application process, especially on this letter, and I think you guys have a letter from Red Hawk saying, "Please be advised, please be advised that effective on January 16th..." Well, let's get ahead of this first. First, I went in, I knew, I knew the liquor license was going to be revoked or sent back to the city, because I owned the lease on the property, and he was not going to sign a lease with me. So I asked the city, "Can I apply for that liquor license?" They told me, "No, it goes back to the city, first come, first served." I said, "Can I leave a license here to be held?" "No, you can't." So therefore, I knew this was going to happen. I affected, I talked to Tina and Chris, and they knew that I was interested, and I had other clients that were interested in leasing my building for a license of the same for the liquor store. And sorry, for a minute, I got to catch up on my notes. So when I found out there wasn't a license available, I said, "Can I, can you let me know right away when one comes in?" Well, then that's where this letter comes involved, that on January 16th, they relinquished any and all rights to the license. So it goes back to the city. I or some of the clients I was working with were interested in either buying the license or the business and putting it in the same spot and having it as a neighborhood liquor store. And they say then, effective January 15th, they sold the business and certain assets of Red Hawk to Minnesota Wine and Spirits, whatever they have. Well, the thing I have in concern here was, I'm wondering what they sold. I was in there, the last six months, there wasn't anything on the shelf to sell. And do you move a business from Cliff Road over here, and all the way over to the Burnsville Center, you think that business is going to go with you? These are questions. So that's, that's a big asset for me of wondering, you know, what happened here? Because I wasn't able to apply for it. I had been in the business. I knew the license application was going to go back to the city sometime, but why did it come in? Excuse me, I think it came in within two hours of the application come in. I know that they were offered money for that license, and I can prove that, because I worked with a gal and a broker that was involved in that. But all of a sudden, they sold the assets and the business. There were no assets, and there really wasn't any business. So what did they sell? And it went back to the city. I didn't have a chance to get that license. Either did some other clients that I was working with for that same building.
Mr. Bresnahan, are you going to be wrapping this up?
Yep, I'm done in about one minute.
Okay. Thank you.
I actually think that this license should be denied, be denied, because what they did back then, and what you guys did, were for neighborhood liquor stores. And I also want to say that I've, I've got a vested interest in there that the city made me do 30 years ago as a young man, and I have a property that's perfect for a liquor store, and whether myself or somebody else wanted to come in there, it served the neighborhood. So I thank you. I've been paying taxes, own a building in this, in this town for 35 years, and I appreciate you denying this license.
Thank you, Mr. Bresnahan. Mr. Chris Simmons?
This is Mayor, Chris Simmons, with the ownership group, also with Nat Shea and Candy, also Judge Jensen, apart from you guys who work for Target.
Okay. Are you going to speak, or are you just...
I'm here to answer questions.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Mr. Nat Shea. Thank you. And Mr. Mike Maglish.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Mike Maglish. I reside on 16700 Graves Bay Boulevard, Minnetoka. I will be briefed this evening. My speech was probably going to be about three and a half minutes. It's down to about a minute because of everyone else's discussion. I would like to set the record straight a little bit. One of the lawyers that was up here earlier for the applicant made a statement that MGM left and then came back. I'm not sure what he meant by that, unless he knows something I don't know. That's, we've never left the community up on 42. That store has been there for 30 years. So I hope he's checked his facts on, on everything else he's presented here a little bit better than the fact that he threw out there in front of the public. We never left. And again, I've heard many of our retailers here speak this evening. I heard nothing from the presentation of the applicant. It was, it was amazing. I thought I was in a, a investment meeting presentation, but I heard nothing that he said that was, they were bringing to the city of Burnsville, other than, that isn't already here, other than some free space for people to meet at. But I think we have an awful lot of... But I think we have an awful lot of available space here in the City Council chambers for people to meet. So I didn't see, see anything or hear anything new. My store is at 3050 Highway 13. I've been a bit, part of this business community for a long time. You know me. I signed a purchase agreement to buy Liquorville contingent upon the approval of the Burnsville City Council for a liquor license. I'm under the impression, in, in, in the case of the applicant, in other instances, for example, Bloomington, they have a fully fixtured store that they decided to build out and fixture before they were even approved for a liquor license. I don't understand that. I understand that in Roseville, they bought a liquor store, entered into a purchase agreement, bought out a liquor store, bought the inventory, which somehow disappeared for a while prior to getting a liquor license approved. And here they come to Burnsville and the same business practice. Buying out a store, buying its assets prior to getting a liquor license approved. It just, it doesn't make business sense, but that seems to be their business model. It seems to me to be a little bit disrespectful to us here in the state of Minnesota that we have for licensing. Maybe that's different in other states. But I know that we have never, ever applied for, or purchased a store or built out a building prior to getting a liquor license approval. That's tattamount. And we, and we respect that. My application was, was approved in December of 2012. I invested significant amount of money, well over $2-million into location on Highway 13 for, for several reasons, two reasons basically. One, I believed in the ordinance that we had at the time. I believe that licenses could not be interchanged between the various circles. I never even thought about moving that license from that location, out of that circle into another circle. Just didn't even enter my mind. Perhaps I should have looked at the ordinance closer and I could have saved a lot of money by maybe looking for a leased location somewhere else in a different area. But it, it just, I didn't, I was there for the 2009 ordinance discussions and I was on some of those committees and in those work sessions. And I just believed when a license was in a circle, it stayed in a circle. You couldn't move it around like a checker piece on a checkerboard. The second reason I, I invested so, so much money into the Highway 13 location is because I believed in, in this council's vision of a revitalized Highway 13 business corridor. The citizens and business owners of Burnsville should be pleased with the hard work that this council has put into this important project. Your plan convinced me to invest that significant amount of money into that area. Spent a lot of money rehabbing a building that you know was in disrepair and have turned it into a, a much more modern and clean retail establishment. The previous store did not carry the selection. We added thousands and thousands of SKUs and continue to add SKUs and selection into that location. I don't, I don't believe that there is a, that there's products in, in, available in Minnesota that aren't being represented by the retailers that are currently selling in this community. I won't go into any more items here that have already been discussed. But I felt that my investment into that area on Highway 13 was not an easy project to complete. However, dealing with the city staff, your Buildings Department and your Inspection Department allowed us to get that project done in an efficient and on-time manner. And I want to thank those departments this evening and thank you as the council for making that happen. They did an excellent job.
You have a minute to wrap up, Mr. Maglish?
As I said, that was, that was a difficult project. The road construction's been tough down there and the store's not profitable yet. In closing, I would like to applaud the storied history the city of Burnsville and this council has regarding the control, distribution, and enforcement of the sale of a product that can pose significant public health concerns. There are some that think this product should be deregulated and sold on every corner, any day of the week, and at any hour of the day. I can assure you, I am not one of those retailers. The city does not need another big liquor store clustered in this area. I respectfully request you deny this license for this location and continue to attract retailers that add something new to this already congested area. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maglish. That is the end of all the people who said that they would speak and who signed. Now, is there anyone who believes that they have something of value and compelling to add that has not already been said? Something different? Okay, and your name and address for the record, please. But you're, you're going to add value?
I hope so.
Okay.
Otherwise, no one will come up.
Alrighty, very good. Thank you.
My name is Jack Farrell. I'm the chairman of Haskell's. I think I'm up here because I'm a dinosaur. Haskell's has been in the business for 80-years. I've had it for 45 of those 80-years. I'd like to correct my friend, Mr. Trone. We have 10,000 SKUs of wine at Haskell's, a little more than their 8,000. But what I wanted to say here, I love competition. Competition makes you a better merchant. It's done it for me for years. However, we have competition here that I would call not Minnesota nice. When you look at all of these infractions that have been brought to your attention and the mere fact that they have paid $1-million, $1-million in fines in one state tells me that there is some problems there that aren't really meeting the eye. I mean, I can't imagine, we haven't been, ever fined anything in 80-years. And to be fined $1-million, I think is probably the most significant thing that you're going to talk about here. It's okay to talk about density and everything else. But when you look at who these people are, as I said, I don't think, they're probably not Minnesota nice. And that's all I have to say. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Farrell. Alrighty. Anybody else who feels compelled? A compelling statement that you think has not yet been said that will add value to this deliberation? Thank you. With that, I will now close the public hearing. And our process for this evening, because I've been handed a note and I would like for all of you to just, just sit for a while. We're going to take a three-minute break and we'll be coming right back.
That's why I felt compelled. I don't know who did it, but I feel compelled to have a bio-break before we-
I know it. And, and, so, three-minutes. Keep your seats. We're recessing and so the-
Thank you.
Okay. We're recessing for three-minutes. I will now reconvene the Burnsville City Council meeting. And the public hearing has closed. And our process now for tonight is first, members of the council, you have any questions for our attorney, for our staff, or for anyone? If not, I have questions. Councilmember Sherry, you're in queue and you're on-
Thank you. Madam Mayor, I really don't have a question. I just want to clear up something for, for the people who are here tonight and those who are, who may be watching. It was said that our staff was adequate in handling this. I, I felt that that was sort of a left-handed compliment. As a councilmember, I want to thank our staff. You have been there for me for every question, whether it be a very, taking a lot of detail or, or just a quick question. You've spent many, many hours preparing for this meeting tonight, giving us background, answering questions. And I speak both of our attorney, city attorney, and all the city staff who has been involved with this project. You have been much more than adequate. You've been outstanding. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Coughlin.
This is also a statement. I just want to make it clear that our city attorney has advised us on every legal argument. We don't, you know, so, when I was contacted by some people, they wondered if I, why hadn't I called the city attorney in Bloomington? We, this is our city attorney and he advises us. We don't contact other city attorneys and ask them what their opinion is. I didn't contact the city of Roseville city attorney. I would never contact the city of Bloomington. And I just want to assure you that we are very comfortable 100% with the, the detailed advice that we have received from our attorney on all legal matters that have been raised in this and, and have had an adequate opportunity to discuss with our attorney any of our questions and received adequate answers.
Councilmember Keely, are you, you keep pressing your button and then it keeps disappearing. No, because if it's, if it's there, it's blinking at me and then it goes away. Councilmember Keely.
Councilmember Gustafson sat at the seat for, for many years and I remember he used to do this to get your attention, but-
No, no. If you hit it and I'm seeing it-
So I just thought a little blinky, you like to do the job. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
It's there, yeah.
I'm, I'm having a little fun. I have one question for Mr. Trone.
Mr. Trone, can you come to the podium, please, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Trone. I think in light of the, the size of the New Jersey fee, fine, costs, that, that is something that I think you should have a fair opportunity to explain to everyone, the nature of that.
Yeah, the New Jersey, $50,000, which each store paid for five-years, was not a fine. That is an absolute untruth. Phil Griffith knows that, but he doesn't matter because the facts don't get in his way. I'm a little fired up about that point because we're here to talk about facts, not what's fact somebody wants. So that was a $50,000 per year over five-years. And it was an investigation that went on and went on and went on against us and Costco. We could never figure it out, what they wanted, what they were talked about. So their attorneys came to our attorneys and said, "Hey, why don't we talk about this?" And they said, "We'd be happy to have a settlement for costs. No fine, no suspension, just pure costs." Now, we made a business decision, $50,000 a year was a very small part of my profits in each one of those stores. It was an easy decision. It was a simple decision. And it was the right decision to get it behind us for whatever they wanted. And I'd like Tom Hefelfinger, the U.S. Attorney, to take a second because he actually spoke to the folks in New Jersey who I negotiated that settlement of costs with, Wes Geisel and Kevin Schatz. Tom?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Hefelfinger. Okay, please.
Madam Mayor-
I have one follow-up, pardon me, I have one follow-up for Mr. Trone before he leaves.
Okay. But is Mr. Hefelfinger going to enlarge on?
Yes, please. Just one before, before Mr. Trone went all the way back to his chair.
Okay, because I have a question for Mr. Trone also. Mr. Hefelfinger, please.
I want to make this quick because nobody wants to hear from the lawyers. And in all due respect to Mr. Trone, I'm not the U.S. Attorney. I think that's somebody else now. We did an investigation, two points I need to make. Mr. Griffith was disingenuous regarding the RSSI issue and whether or not there were a whole bunch of violations, we didn't report to you. I stand by the report that I gave, Mr. Jamnik, as to the number of violations. And the primary reason is, as I know, I know you know, licenses are issued to entities. In this case, it's Minnesota Wine and Spirits, I believe. In this case, it's Minnesota Wine and Spirits, I believe. Each one of the states, there is an operating company, an entity, the licensee. Those are the ones who get the license, but they're also the ones who get the violations and the citations. RSSI is not a licensee in any one of the 101 stores of Total Wine that we checked out. It's 103 now because they've added two since we finished our report. And so the violations, 29 violations is an accurate number. But as to New Jersey, one of the reasons we stand behind our numbers is that we went to each one of those regulators ourselves. And we went to those stores, to those regulators and said, you tell us, how many violations does Cherry Hill have or any one of the other licensees? And they told us what they were. They told us what the warnings were, which you now have. They told us what the investigations were that didn't result in violations. Those are all reported to you in that report for each one of the 15 states. Now, in New Jersey, there was a, the issue here is, as you saw Mr. Griffith put up on the screen, a computer screen that says fine. This case, as our investigation revealed, that in New Jersey, the matter was resolved by negotiation between counsel for the two licensees in New Jersey and the state of New Jersey. And the negotiation ended up in a consent order. The consent order stated that respondent has agreed, I'm quoting here, and it's in our report, and by the way, you don't have to take my word for it, our report includes as appendices, all the source documents, including the consent orders. And the consent orders state, quote, respondent has agreed to reimburse petitioner, that's the state, for its costs of investigation in the amount of $250,000. Now, I asked, one of the things that made our investigation unique is, we went to each one of those departments, either personally or by phone, for an interview. And on March 26th of this year, I personally interviewed two of the leading people in the New Jersey Alcohol Beverage Control Unit, a guy named Wes Geiselman and a guy named Kevin Schatz. And I asked them if there were any other agreements. I'm talking now about these four $250,000 payments that total the $1 million, which Mr. Farrell is calling a fine. But I asked these folks, I said, were there any other agreements besides that consent order between the state of New Jersey and those two licensees, each of whom owned two stores? The answer was from Mr. Geiselman, we don't do secret deals with licensees. The order speaks for itself, okay? So I then asked them if, to agree that the term that I just quoted you, that quote, about costs of investigation, if that's, had I accurately quoted from the consent order, Geiselman and Schatz said, the document says what it says. I then asked where the word fine for $250,000, whether it appears in the case tracking system. That's the computer sheet. That's the computer sheet. They said that it does. I then asked them where the word fine appears in the consent order. And the answer I got was, the word fine is not in the consent order. And the document says what it says. When I asked Geiselman and Schatz why the CTS records show the payment listed as a fine when the document that settles the dispute, the consent order, does not, their response was, they're not going to answer that question. Finally, I asked Mr. Schatz and Mr. Geiselman, by the way, we got our documents through public records requests as well. And I asked, and I will tell you, when we did a public records request on New Jersey, we got, for these four transactions, four computer shots. And I asked Mr. Geiselman and Mr. Schatz, why, when we had submitted our public records request, copies of the consent order were not sent in response to that public records request? And Mr. Schatz stated, quote, this sounds like a deposition and we're not obligated to answer. Now, I don't want to replay what happened in New Jersey. I'm just telling you what my investigation revealed about that fact situation. And all of the documents and the interview memoranda from that interview with those two regulators are in the very large packet of information that I shared with your council. And I am confident, based on public records requests, that Mr. Griffiths also has that, but he didn't say, feel like he needed to share that with you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. You have a follow-up.
Because it was a payment of expenses, we also could deduct if our income tax returns too, which was 50% less, just so we understand. It was paid over five years, $50,000 a year over five years. You have a $20 million store, four $20 million stores, that's a very small cost that you put something behind you with the state of New Jersey.
Okay.
Which doesn't play with Minnesota nice either, by the way.
Councilmember Keely, you had a follow-up question?
One final question. There was a point made about that you purchased a building in Bloomington before you obtained the license. Can you explain why you chose to do that, what communication that you received from the city or from the developer or whatever that would have led you to do something like that?
We purchased the business in Bloomington and then we signed the lease and then we went ahead and applied for our license in Bloomington. Takes a while to go through the process. And every single word we have, the city of Bloomington, was, we are so excited to have you here. We are pumped up, the staff, everybody. They realize we're a destination like a Whole Foods, but they have something called the Mall of America there, this little big mall that I noticed that's out here. And they said, that's us, we love commerce. So, you know, I'm a okay guy, we heard that. And we said to the landlord, well, based on what staff told us, and everything is going so well, and I've got 103 stores in the country, I've never been turned down for a liquor license, ever, 103 for 103, because I run a good business. And based on that, we've waived the licensing contingency in Bloomington. In a hurry to get open for the Christmas season, we invested another $1 million of my family's money to build out the building and my wife and I, my brother and his wife, are personally signed on the lease. We're guaranteed it. We pay it every check. I write the check every month for an empty building in Bloomington now. Now, everything was good until Friday before the hearing on Monday. Mr. Griffith, at 4:30 in the afternoon, dumped a stack of documents, which you now have, on their desk at 4:30 on a Friday and said, hey, I've got problems. And by the way, the person he refers to as Sandy, well, that's Mrs. Sandra Johnson, the lawyer. I guess they're in a pretty good relationship to call her Sandy. But she works with the city of Bloomington, with the Mall of America, who he also represents. So his client, they hired the right lobbyist, they hired the guy that works for the Mall of America. He's wired, big time wired. And since then, we've been delayed. We're going to win in Bloomington because at the end of the day, in the U.S., in this country, white wins. That's the way it's going to work out. But we're going to just keep at it, we're going to be relentless, and we will prevail in Bloomington. But it's a pretty raw deal and we're paying a heavy price every month when I write the rent check. And I'm not happy about it.
I could tell.
No, I'm not.
Came through a little bit. But you know what, that's, it's unfortunate. That isn't the way America should work and things happen and so be it. We don't have any governance in that city, but Madam Mayor, back to you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Trone, thank you. You gave a great presentation. You have a wonderful retail store. And my question is, in the state of Minnesota, you have to have a buyer's card, correct? And you have, if I understand the rules correctly, and our attorney can correct me, that with that buyer's card, you have to buy from the wholesalers within the state?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Help me understand how you can purchase a product, wine or whatever, and sell them at $2 to $2,000 and others cannot do that. Is there a difference in volume purchasing?
State of Minnesota, you absolutely have to have a buyer's card. You buy your product through the three-tier system. That's the rules, it's a rule all over the United States. So I operate in all these states, always is through a wholesaler. When the product comes in, there's some products that have a very low cost, that'd be the $2.47 wine. There's other products that have a very high cost, that'd be a $1,000 bottle of, say, Lafite or whatever. But as far as why our prices are so low, is because we choose to work on volume, so we work on weighted averages. So many, many items, we work right at cost. Now, they can buy the product at the same cost that we do, if they buy the 25 case quantity discount, but because they're all friendly in the same room, they don't work on margins that I work on. But I've dealt with this all my life, since I finished graduate school. People that are in a protected industry that say, I'm protected and there's rules and regulations, so I can charge whatever I want, the consumer gets the high most, and they make a lot of money, then yes, they talk about, I give something back. Well, the consumer is paying them to give it back. They could sell for the same price as I sell, they choose not to. That's okay. It's a different model. We work on volume.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Not at this.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Jamnik and staff, Mr. Brezhnevhan talks about the Red Hawk and please help me understand that whole process. How is it that it was, the product was, the business was sold, so when we have first come, first serve, is it the person who first comes in and says, I want that license, before a hearing is taking place?
Mayor and council, that's basically correct in the sense that we don't have a waiting list, we don't allow interested parties to queue up and then notify them when one comes available. The license is, when it's turned back in, becomes available and then the first party that applies for that application. We process that application in total before, you know, if it's turned down, then it would be available for someone else to apply for. So it does sort of lock up for the, for the dependency of the application process, but it is first come, first served when they are available. There is no waiting line. And I'm not exactly sure, I'm not familiar with the transaction between the tenant or the landlord or the tenant and Minnesota Fine Wines. But my understanding is no violation of any of our procedures or our ordinance in that, in that transaction.
So I understand. And I think Mr. Brezhnevhan said that there was no product left in the business, so there was no alcohol that took place or was transferred during that?
I'm not aware of what the tenant, the operator did as far as disposing of it. There's a procedure under Minnesota law to return product, you can't transfer to another retail operation and those types of things. I'm not familiar with what that business did when it closed.
Any other questions for Mr. Jamnik? Okay. I know what I'm.
I'm blinking my.
You're blinking and I'm just asking if there's any other questions. So, councilmember Keely.
Just want to clarify some things, questions for Mr. Jamnik. As our city attorney, as councilmember Coughlin pointed out, much as those in the audience who have their attorneys present, Mr. Jamnik is our attorney and we rely upon his opinion and his position to guide us. Was Total Wine willing to work with you to address your concerns about the trust ownership as far as, as far as Minnesota Fine Wines?
Yes, Ms. Page, who represents them, I think first discussed the issue with staff in December and extensively with me and in a series of exchanges. I think we resolved that matter approximately around April 4th or through the 7th with the changes to the trust that it's, was made to my satisfaction, the real persons in interest here are Robert and David Trone, not their children. The trust does not allow for direct distributions anymore to the minor children. It satisfies my concern that the council tonight is acting on a license that really goes to the corporate entities controlled by the two Trone brothers.
One follow-up, is there anything about the granting a license to Total Wine tonight that would be contrary to the 2009 amendments to the plan?
Not in my opinion. I believe it's fully consistent with the ordinance that was adopted in 2009. That's not to say that the council doesn't have the authority to go back and look back at what the 2009 governance study resulted in, but in my opinion, we're fully compliant with the ordinance adopted in 2009 for that area of the city.
Then one final, the additional liquor license applicants that came after that 2009 ordinance change was made, were those applications put through the exact same process for approval or denial?
Yes, from our perspective, as far as our background investigation, certainly on this one, because of the additional information and verification and follow-ups that were required, we certainly spent more time on it and done more extensive reviews, more exchanges with attorneys on both sides than we have with previous applicants. But this council has never questioned a bill from my office or told me not to expend any funds. You've devoted as much resources as we wanted to devote to this matter. We closed off our review, we stand by our recommendation to issue in consistent with our current ordinances.
So in fact, what you've said is, in this particular application, the city had to go beyond normal customary time and measures to process this application in response to the additional information that came toward us?
Correct. I mean, we follow, we follow the pattern or we follow the trail wherever it leads.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Coughlin.
Just sort of one last clarifying question. Have you heard or seen, heard anything this evening or since you've advised us on any of these issues and/or seen any documents that would now change your advice as to any of the issues that are before us? No, we stand by our recommendation to council.
Okay.
Thank you.
Members of the council, do you have any statements to make before we go to a vote? I have a statement to make. And my statement is for the community of Burnsville. And I respect and really understand the business of Total Wine and their desire to be part of the community of Burnsville. But as the governing body of the city of Burnsville, we also have a legislative role. I understand what the recommendation is before us this evening from our staff, but in the role which this application is being reviewed, we have broad discretion in our review and in that role, I have evaluated the application in a relationship to the long-term good for the community of Burnsville. And our comprehensive plan speaks to our philosophical position and values in several areas of that plan. It speaks to a diversified and balanced economic base and it also speaks to a balanced land use strategy that provides for a sustainable community. We in Burnsville have worked hard to achieve this vision for our community as exemplified by the actions that we have adopted regarding distance separations of uses such as liquor stores, pawn stores, hookah lounges, et cetera. Our liquor license for many years was airtight, but when we opened it up to allow for a new use like Costco, that was a community need and a want, we did not close a loophole for the shopping center area to honor and to be in alignment with the philosophical position of our city and community. Our Economic Development Commission recommended that we cap the license in the shopping center area, but we didn't because we believed at the time that all is well because there were no license available, both in the neighborhood area and there both in the neighborhood area and therefore in the shopping center area. All license were spoken for and I never anticipated that a super big box liquor store would be located in the shopping center area. This application results in a cluster of single use which now does not align with our philosophical position and value because it creates an imbalance in one area where we say that we want a diversified, balanced economic base to sustain the viability of our community. Because of all of that, I cannot support a license for a use that creates an imbalance in this area. I believe that in our state of Minnesota, a city is not obligated to approve a liquor license because the applicant has met the application requirements. And certainly, we've heard that tonight. My vote tonight is for Burnsville's long term. And I'm honoring the work that many of our citizens who convened to work on our comprehensive plan, which is a document that reflects the philosophical and values of our community. I'm also honoring the recommendation of our Economic Development Commission and saying to them, "You were right. You anticipated an unintended consequence for not capping this area." And so with that, when we take the vote, you will know exactly where I stand. So I vote for the community of Burnsville. Is anyone here ready to make a motion? Oh, I see that Councilmember Keely wishes to speak and then Councilmember Coughlin and Councilmember Winn. Councilmember Keely.
Oh, boy, here comes the speeches. Well, thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I think this is a very big decision for this council, for the city. And there's a few observations that I'd like to share, many of which I shared with some conversations that I had with some of the folks tonight, speaking in favor of and speaking in opposed. I think it's important to know that regardless of what we determined tonight, somebody's not going to like us. Many taxpayers and citizens are here from inside and outside Burnsville and many wholeheartedly support this, as we've heard, and many are very much against it. So whatever the final decision, some are going to be happy and some are not. And I, this is the times that I think to myself, "I don't remember anyone telling me when I was going to run for office that I could make friends and enemies in the same night." But that's the reality of this job. I want to also remind everybody that, and I'm very, very proud of this. I make no bones about it. Burnsville is an open market for liquor businesses. We are not municipally owned. All of the owners exist here today in Burnsville before us because we are a free market, open market, not a government-owned municipal liquor business. I'm very proud of that. Some of our neighboring cities are not and I wish they'd change their laws. That brings me to free market principles. At the core of this decision to me, it challenges our principles of free and open market or protectionism. In my humble opinion, government should not pick who gets to play and who doesn't. One can interpret that as a bit socialistic and too much government intervention in private business and free market matters. Nearly every retail and non-retail business that exists today must compete in the market with no government protection. Think of any business out there, any business, that has afforded some sort of protection on how many competitors, excuse me, they have to go up against. There aren't very many. Businesses live or die on the success of their business model in how well they serve their customers and differentiate themselves from the competition. And quite frankly, I think it's been said many times, competition is the mother of innovation. But not for competition, reinvestment and innovation would scarcely exist in our private markets. We would begin to resemble Russia if most of our businesses were controlled and governed and protected from competition. I don't think any one of us wants to go there. Historical example of this, you might all remember when Home Depot and Lowe's, and I believe someone brought that up, entered the market many, many years ago. It was common thought that Ace Hardware and True Hardware would vanish from the face of the American retail marketplace. Think about what Ace Hardware looked like then and think about where they're at today. They absolutely thrived when challenged with the big monster store coming to town. When Walmart opened in small towns, they expected every five-and-dime, every hardware store, every clothing store to dry up and go away. Did that happen? Some did? No, but not all of them. There are many examples where there's a Walmart open and the local clothing shops, the local five-and-dimes still exist today. You may disagree. I've traveled the country and I've seen it myself. There's an Ace Hardware in Burnsville today. And there's a Home Depot in Burnsville today. Our ordinance is clear in what we require to gain from a license. Our city attorney has stated that they've met these requirements. He is our attorney and just as you may have an attorney that guides you. In 2009, our ordinance was deliberate in the fact that we intended to control the total number of licenses in the city, not in that retail zone. Otherwise, the ordinance would have stated that clearly. It does not. Did Cubs, Barleys, Haskell's purchase a license wanting to compete with Costco and even MGM, who had been there for 30-plus years? Apparently so. Some of these businesses exist today because we unlocked that buffer, that protection, and they immediately came in and bought the licenses. Good for them. More power to them because that's what a free market is there for to do. Offer the opportunity for those that want to compete. According to the standards we judged all existing license holders, including those who chose to open in this buffer-free retail zone by applying for those unused licenses when we remove this distance buffer, they know, they know full well they would be subjected to competitive market forces nearly all other retail businesses face, knowing full well they would be joining the higher concentration of stores. Is four the right number? But five's too many? Who is to determine that? I'll tell you who should determine that. The market because it determines it in every other instance, with few exceptions, as noted. Why is it good for them to play now, then, but not now? I'm sorry, but that's not fair play. What is the difference in this application? I'll tell you absolutely nothing. Total Wine is simply another competitor, no different from them, with the exception of their size. So are we being asked to judge them based on being too big? Obviously, we cannot and will not judge who gets to play and who doesn't based on that criteria. So I disagree with my very respected and very beloved mayor and dear friend, Mrs. Couts. I am in support of this application. I have sat at this dais for seven years and I have never once been in favor of protectionism or government deciding who gets to play and who doesn't. Look in the record and you'll find that I am consistent with these principles because they are what guides me every time I step up to this dais. And I will not deviate from that, picking and choosing who gets to win and who gets to play and who doesn't. Thank you.
Councilmember Coughlin.
At the outset, I agree with the statements made by Councilmember Keely. But I'd like to just add a few other points that are important to me. And a lot of you out there know that I listened to all your arguments. I read the vast majority of all the material. I called, almost either called or emailed back, if you didn't have a telephone number, any person that contacted me with respect to this issue. Each of you know that. Jay Nelson knows that he called me twice and I let him tell me his point of view in detail. But in that regard, this is recommended by city staff. Again, just to clarify, our attorney has found no reason legally that this shouldn't be approved. Thirdly, that it was recommended by the majority of the planning commission when it was brought before them, and that's a respected body. That's a body that we appoint. Fourthly, the vast majority of emails that came from Burnsville residents that I read, I will represent to you, were for Total Wine coming in and being allowed to open in Burnsville. And finally, I will also represent to you folks out there that the vast majority of businesses, not liquor stores, but general business people that sent emails to, that I got copies of, were also in favor of opening, allowing Total Wine to open as well. And for those reasons, I also am in support of allowing Total Wine to open in this.
Councilmember Winn.
Well, I do agree in the free market. I think the market should decide oftentimes. And we have to remember, this is a very important decision and we are talking about a controlled substance. And as Councilmember Coughlin said, we had many emails, phone calls, voicemails. I met with many people over this last month. It's been a very contentious issue here in Burnsville and it's, we all take it very serious. I want to thank staff for all their hard work that they've done. And it's, it's been a lot to go through, a lot of, a lot of things to consider. And talking to citizens that I've, just in my neighborhood, at the store, there are those that say, "That's great, bring them in. We love, you know, that's like the discounted prices, large selection." But the people who are concerned about the area, and this is my concern. I like Total Wine. I like their concept. I think they're innovative. They're on the cutting edge of technology. I think it appeals to a lot of people. But my concern is not in that area. I think it's, we have a concentration there that was not closed in 2009 by the ordinance. But even at our work session, we all said, and I wasn't there, but many said, "Well, didn't we put a cap on that? Didn't we have some ideas about that area in general?" I just don't want to see one liquor store after another in that area. And so for my, the background, the application checks out. Our staff and our attorney have said that. I would be willing to approve the license. I have trouble approving the PUD with, in that area. So that's, I want the citizens to understand that I think Total Wine would be great for Burnsville. Love to see them come here. But can you find somewhere else in Burnsville?
Councilmember Sherry.
Well, first of all, I want to thank all the people who contacted me and the other council members. I, as Bill said, I listen to all of you. Many times, we've had many conversations over the last several weeks. And I learned a lot from you. I learned a lot about your business. I, I found it very, very interesting and very productive in that sense. I'm afraid that I have to come down with the staff's recommendation because I think that, that if we were to ask Total Wine to go to another spot in Burnsville, I have a feeling that this room will be packed again. Because I think what the bottom line is that they're tough competitors with a very innovative business model. And, and I don't think, I don't want to speak for all of you, but my sense is, when I've talked on you one-on-one, that you don't want them anywhere in Burnsville. I feel that that's anti-competitive. And I cannot do that to any kind of business in Burnsville. I wouldn't do it to any kind of business in Burnsville. This is the hardest decision I've ever made.
I agree.
Thank you. Not that I don't want to see Total Wine in Burnsville. It's the cluster when we put separations with other business types. So, and when I spoke with Mr. Robert Trone, I did share with him what my thoughts were. And also said, "Outside of the shopping center area. Have you looked at that?" And they had not. So for me, I look to the long-term good. And we all may have different decisions around all of that. But you've heard from all of us now and I thank you all because I've spoken with all of you and with the Total Wine folks. I met with Mr. Robert Trone and Darren and other folks who were there. And also spoke to some of our liquor license holders here in Burnsville and many of our residents. So I thank you all for your contribution, your thoughts to this deliberation and your input. So Councilmember Keely, are you ready to make a motion or you have more to say?
I would like to just make a note in the record that, sorry. It's the first time I've ever been told my voice doesn't carry and it's too loud. It clearly, we have a sense as to where this vote is going to go. I just have to make this statement. We have a lot of great liquor stores in Burnsville. I shop at two or three of them. And I think I speak for many because I have talked to many who support this. I'm sure that we will visit Total Wine, but I'm still going to spend the same amount and travel the same number of trips to my preferred local liquor store to buy beer or wine or keg for the graduation party for the parents. You know, it's really, this is, this isn't something that's going to change everybody's purchasing power into one location. And I think reality will teach us that and show us that. But I'm a frequent visitor of a few stores and they know who they are in the room and that's not going to change. With that, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
A motion can be made and we'll come back and have a discussion. And I can recognize you, Councilmember Coughlin. So the motion is made by Councilmember Keely. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Coughlin. Discussion, Councilmember Coughlin.
I just want to make sure the record's clear that I've heard. And what I hear up here, based on council, is that all five, correct me if I'm wrong, all five council would welcome Total Wine to town. It's just that two said that they just wouldn't welcome them into that area. And with that, that's what I understand.
This vote is for the liquor license. And a motion is made to approve and second by Councilmember Sherry. Oh, no, Councilmember Coughlin. The motion was made by Councilmember Keely, second by Councilmember Coughlin to approve the liquor license. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Nay, may the record. Does a clerk have the division of the House?
I do, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay. We now move on to item number eight. Nope?
Yep.
Yes, number eight.
Number eight. Item eight is the application for PMJ Bernhaven LLC for a plan unit development amendment for a liquor store located at 820 County Road 42 West and to consider the findings of fact, the ordinance and the amended plan unit development agreement. Mr. Chris Slania, our planner, is presenting. Mr. Slania.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. The planning commission saw this item at their February 10th meeting. Planning commission discussed it, held the public hearing. As with tonight, there were a number of public comments made to the planning commission. Those people were out, the people and the comments were outlined in the planning commission minutes and included in your packet this evening. The staff's recommendation to the planning commission was approval of the proposed PUD amendment. The planning commission again had a divided vote, three in favor, two against the application. Commissioners Julik and Tahiri were concerned with the, again, the concentration or the clustering of these heavily regulated uses in one area of the community. The PUD is brought forth by PMJ properties. They are the property owner for the shopping center. You can see the subject property outlined in red and the proposed floor plan for the space. And you can see the existing tenant space with no exterior entrance, proposed next to Alt cosmetics. Proposed next to Alt cosmetics would be the Total Wine space proposed. The planning commission, on that 3-2 vote, did recommend approval. There were two conditions with the application. Those are outlined in the screen in front of you this evening. Madam Mayor, council, representatives from the property owner are here. Their architect is here. Staff will stand for any questions you have.
Any questions for staff? Any questions for the applicant? If not, I think they've heard everything that they need to hear. I will also be voting in against, because it's the cluster that is of great concern to me. So, are you ready to make a motion?
You're all looking at me.
Well, I'm just trying to look over here, but nobody is queuing up.
I hit the blinky light, and I got called upon. Thank you.
So, nobody wants to queue up?
I make a motion to adopt the findings of facts and the ordinance to approve the amended plan unit development agreement as recommended by the planning commission.
Second.
Okay. Councilmember Keely makes the motion, second by Councilmember Coughlin. Again, I will be voting against this, because, again, it is about the cluster, and it's just very much a concern to me, and I hope that we clean this up later on. So, there's a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Does the clerk have the division of the House?
I do, Madam.
Okay. There are three ayes and two nays. Okay. And with that, there are no other items to come before the body this evening, and a motion to adjourn is in order.
Second.
Councilmember Keely makes the motion, second by Councilmember Coughlin. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. And the motion carries. Good night, and thank you for being with us.